So. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance and let's see, I think I will ask. Mr. Reed, would you read that?
Please write.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, once again, we have a very full agenda tonight, so we'll try to move as quickly as we can through this. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Wadsworth?
Here.
Councilwoman Sandretto?
Here.
Councilwoman Mokler?
Here.
Councilman Reed?
Here.
Councilwoman Funt?
Here.
All present, Madam Mayor.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Which consists of the regular meeting minutes and the bills and communications.
I'd like to remove the bills for discussion.
Okay. Alright, so removing the bills. I will take a motion to approve the regular minutes of May 3rd.
I should approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
Alright, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the bills and communications. Mr. Mokler.
Page one of the claims, claim number 31817. To Jessica Landa for 2099-50, I was just curious what that was for.
Which one?
31817.
Oh, that's our, the trees downtown. It's Perez Trees, but she, they waited up to her. That's what it's for.
Yeah, we've got new trees this year.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Rebecca, could you put the mic closer to you, please?
I'm getting closer. Yeah, it's for the trees on Main Street, the ones that we had budgeted last year didn't do, but did this year.
Is there anything else with that?
No.
How was it? Okay, Madam Mayor, I'm motion to approve the claim check number. Let me, let me read it. I moved to approve payment of claim check numbers 31795 through 31831 with EFTs listing the amount of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars, sixty-eight cents. For that same total, the seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
Alright. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And let's give a name as we say aye, please. So that we know who is.
Wadsworth, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mokler.
Reed, aye.
Sandretta, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on now to the approval of the agenda, and we would like to make some changes to the agenda. It's been offered to move items L1 and L2 up right after the regular reports and prior to the public hearings. That way, we have a presentation and we have a visitor here and they won't have to stay for the whole thing. Are there any other changes to the agenda that?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, you may.
Thanks for your patience, I'm new. I noticed that in old agendas, under regular reports, there used to be a council committee reports, and it's not there anymore. I know there's over fifteen committee assignments for this group and
Yes, we.
It's a lot of work and important, is that something on future agendas that could be considered to be added?
That should be under, at the end of regular reports.
So it'd be H?
We can still do that.
Three?
H3.
May I ask a second clarifying question?
Sure.
So, Councilwoman Gordon was assigned to five out of the fifteen active committees. I just wanted to confirm, am I like, supposed to be participating in all those? I'm absolutely happy to, I just wanted to make sure, see if there was a procedure where it needs to be reviewed for.
Yes, I think we should discuss which ones you're interested in, and I know several people have a lot of committees, they may want to give them.
I'm good, but I'll trade you one.
Maybe, could that be something, do you want to talk about? Or maybe, I don't know when the right time is.
I think.
The agenda's full.
When we do discussion items, we could add that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And just to clarify, we're moving L1 and L2 to right under regular reports, and then we're adding committee report discussions as L5?
As, no, as.
H3.
H3. As regular reporting.
I know, but to discuss who's going to do what? Are we going to put it as a discussion item as L5?
If we're moving L1 and L2 up, it'd be L3.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to move those up. And then you're moving L1 and L2 to H? Two, three?
So, the first one then would be update the admin code, that would be L1. Utility bill is L2. Fish and Wildlife is L3.
Madam Mayor, could you put the mic closer to you, please?
Okay, so it would be L4, the revised L4.
Who's L3?
Fish and Wildlife? I don't see that anywhere here, so.
Sorry, that was asked to be added as well. An update on the status of the Fish and Wildlife.
You mean the summer program?
No, not the summer program, Fish and Wildlife permit for grading.
Okay, so that's four, then we're adding.
So, Council positions.
Media signers.
Would be L5.
That you just said L4.
I had one other amendment to the agenda I wanted to propose. I don't know if it matters. On item number K dot one in the printed agenda, it still states declaring an emergency. It's been corrected everywhere else to remove and strike declaring an emergency because that wasn't appropriate. Does it matter if it's listed in the agenda like that, or only if it goes through only on the resolution?
Only on the resolution.
Super, thanks, sorry for that.
Madam Mayor, this is Alan with Spink Engineering.
Yes.
And I'd like to add, under the executive session, it's same title as the one that's listed there, but need to add another item to that.
Okay.
And that'd be on the same subsection, correct, 110, aye?
Yes, yep.
And one aye?
Yeah, litigation or legal risks, yeah.
Yeah, but is it gonna have to be a number two?
I know, as long as it's the same subsection, we don't need to add it multiple times.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that executive, executive session encompasses everything that we said was going to be covered.
Okay.
You just have it listed once, because it's all the same RCW.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Alright, any other changes? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mokler.
Reed, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Sandretta, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Alright. I don't know that we have any proclamations or acknowledgements. Are there any?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, are there any visitor comments on non-agenda items?
Well, I want to talk about the sensitive agenda. I can't. It's on the agenda, and I'd like to address it, but I don't know what you want to do about it.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, could the person speaking step up to the mic?
Can you step up to the mic, Mr. Deckard?
I would like to address something, but it's on the agenda. And when it comes up, I'm not going to be allowed to speak on it. The city attorney.
Up to, up to the council.
The city attorney called, called me, called me yesterday, and we spent, or Friday, pardon me, Friday, and spent twenty minutes on the phone going over the, over this. And I'm not a happy camper, needless to say, but.
What agenda item do you want to speak on?
L4. Gifting.
I don't know, that's, we were going to discuss that in a closed session, is that correct?
I believe he's referring to the executive session, he did, Mr. Deckard spoke with Craig Briggs on Friday, is my understanding.
Yep, about twenty minutes. I expressed my, my views on this thing, and I wanted all this in. I was told that this was probably going to go to executive session, and I said, this is hogwash, this needs, this is public. This, we got an issue of gifting. Basically, it's illegal, everybody sitting here knows it's illegal, but it's happened again.
It's not.
And I needed to stop. And I wanted, and I wanted, that's why I want to address it.
If it were up to me, I'd have it in an open session as well. If it was up to me, I would have it in open session as well.
It is up to you.
However.
It is up to you.
No, it isn't, it's up to the council.
Alright. With the council vote.
If, if it's not under regular session, can he speak to it, even though we're gonna maybe talk about it in closed session?
Could I address this real quick, since Mr. Deckard and myself had that discussion?
Hey, what?
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Craig Briggs. So I did reach out to Mr. Deckard. He had contacted the city clerk, and this is concerning a a request for information that he had made, that really is seeking, I, I think he's seeking records, but that needs to be in the form of a request for identifiable records, which it was not. And as far as the executive session is concerned, you know, it wouldn't be appropriate to discuss legal advice concerning that matter in an open setting. That's going to put the entity at risk.
No, it doesn't put anything at risk.
Mr. Deckard, I, I think that means that, that you can't speak today. We're not going to discuss it except in an executive session, if that's what I understood, Mr. Briggs.
I can't talk about the theft. Is that correct?
We are going to be discussing things in closed.
Well, I don't know why, I explained to Mr. Deckard that obviously we disagree on this point.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
But I also did my best to provide assistance to him concerning the records request he made. So, we can follow up, we'll, you know, I've talked to the city clerk about this, and we'll follow up with Mr. Deckard on it as well.
Okay.
And, and we are at the visitor comments portion of the agenda, right? Is that?
We are.
Would that be an appropriate time if he wanted to discuss something that's not an agenda item?
Well.
It's on the.
Utility bill insert, because Mr. Mokler requested it.
Okay.
He, he can discuss it in visitor comments.
Yeah. Which is right now.
Okay, if he, if he wants to discuss it in visitor comments, you can go ahead.
What can't speak to it, or what?
Three minutes, Mr. Deckard. How about that?
You want to change something?
No. Well, yeah. Mike. Same, same issue, everybody here knows about gifting. It's illegal, the city cannot do it, but the city has done it again. And it has to do with, like I said, L4. I'm sick and tired of this, and as far as I'm concerned, we find out who directed city staff to use city personnel, equipment, stamps, envelopes, everything, every minute. I want it paid back to the city by the person that directed this to happen, and that would be you, Linda. I want it out of your personal account, not city funds.
No, it's not going to happen because it didn't happen the way you're.
Well, of course not, because you're a thief.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. For your opinion. Okay. Now, we, are there any other visitor comments?
Madam Mayor, Jeff Funch, matter here, may I have a floor?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to also just bring up the topic of our code of conduct, I believe the, our code of ethics, I believe one had been drafted, but it never had been ratified. So just would hope that we could dust that off and revisit that, I think that might be a timely item to, to take a look at going forward. Not necessarily tonight, but at least put it on the agenda for next, next council meetings review.
Probably a good idea, thank you.
Mahalo. Aloha.
Okay, so we'll move on now to the regular reports, and we have the Benton County Sheriff's Staff Report. I believe that's in our packet.
And Mr., I think Lieutenant Clark is here too.
Okay.
I am.
Yeah.
So, I believe that the commander missed last month, I believe we were both actually out of town. So, for March and April, I'll kind of recap, nothing of significance or outside the normal trends that we've seen over the last few years as far as numbers go. One of probably the bigger things on your guys' radar, or anybody else, obviously, was the shooting that we had in Benton City on Friday night. For that, there were two suspects that were identified. One suspect was apprehended on Sunday, the other suspect was apprehended this afternoon. So I won't speak to any of the details, because obviously detectives are still doing interviews, they're still working through the investigation, and all those things, so I won't disclose too much information about that, but as of right now, we have both those suspects in custody. And then the other thing that we were going to bring up is on June 18th, we're going to have a kids' day in your guys' city, bring out the, and it's in cooperation with the fire district there. And so we'll have fire trucks, police cars, bring out, hopefully get our boat out there, the UTVs, some of the big SWAT vehicles, stuff like that, for the kids to come out, take a look at, and just kind of have a, a community event day for the kids to come out and interact with the police and the fire guys. And so we'll send an invite out to the mayor's office, so that you guys have all that information, but it will be on June 18th, and it'll be up at the elementary school in the parking lot there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I also noticed that the, the numbers of offenses was about half what it was at the same time last year.
Right.
And I thought I was very encouraged by that.
Yeah, and so, there's some of the offenses. You know, we see some of them go down, the good news is none of them we're seeing a large uptick in, really. And so, some of those crimes, we're seeing a few less in, you know, just some of it's house legislation bills, some of the other things that we've had over the last year, and they just came out and changed some of those, so we'll probably see some of those offenses go back up as proactive arrests have changed, and how we can enforce laws, and some of those things have changed over time. And so, we'll be able to come up with some of those secondary arrests that evolve from contacts or other situations.
Great, okay. Well, thank you very much, does anyone have any questions for Lieutenant? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys have a great night.
You as well. Thank you.
We'll move on then to the engineering report.
Okay, good evening, this is Alan, can everybody hear me alright?
Yep.
Okay.
You can.
I've got a lot of stuff here, I'll just try to hit the highlights. So, the, the first one, job fourteen dash one twenty-three, Ninth Street Sidewalk Project. That is almost complete. I believe we should be getting all the electrical hooked up this week. L and I has approved the services, and we just need PUD to do their final inspection. And that may have happened today, I'm not sure. We do, we did get additional funds from the county to help cover the costs, additional costs on the project. And with that, I don't know, I don't know if we discuss that later under a general discussion, but I would like to ask for a workshop or a special session to discuss the Ninth Street Sidewalk Project. There's going to be several items that I want to cover for the final change order. And then also like to cover in that workshop are the, the ARPA projects, and the other city projects that we're looking at, that are, we're working on. And I think it would be, I'm guessing it would probably take an hour and a half to two hours for that, just to go over everything in detail.
We will, we will try to set that up.
Okay. Alright. Going down through the, the jobs, the lift station number two, the next one down, nineteen dash one twenty-nine, that one is complete. The reservoir overflow, we've been waiting for Tulsa State Services to come back and do some final grading, and put some gravel on the slopes out there. They've just finished that about two weeks ago. And then the water system rated telemetry, that's been completed. They've come out and done, done some work with the SCADA system on Wade's computer, so that's all complete now. And the projects in designer planning. Hello, are you guys still there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you not hear? See us?
Something happened with my, okay, there it goes, I don't know, I lost the, the this view right here of the meeting, so, sorry about that. Down in job number nineteen dash one oh one, Dyna Lane slash Dale Avenue. Worked with Ken Bricker and the surveyors, and we are real close to getting that boundary line adjustment, so we can realign Dale Avenue going to the east of Seventh, so it lines up at the intersection. And with that, we are probably twenty-five to thirty percent complete on the design. We've been working with Public Works, discussing different elements of it, just to make sure we're giving them the product they want to see at the end. So with that, then onto the next page. The Hope Lane Waterline Project, we are ninety, ninety-five percent complete with that. We've got a few changes to make after meeting with Public Works. And then same thing with the four, fourteen Ninth Street Sewer, this job number twenty dash one oh seven, we, we are ninety to ninety-five percent complete with that. And I guess we're, we're kind of at a standstill trying to figure out what we need to do as far as the ARPA funds, because we talked about going out and getting a quote for a bunch of the materials and fittings for water and sewer, to have them on hand. But we have not received the second installment of the ARPA money, which is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, without getting that, we kind of put a break on that, that trying to get the materials, and wanted to see if we should move forward with bidding out the Hope Lane Waterline and the, the sewer relocation on four fourteen ninth. Just so we're, we're not just using all that money just to buy materials and not getting anything done at this point. So I guess I, I jumped down to part of that job number twenty-one dash one twelve, the ARPA SRI funds. So. I guess I'm not sure where we would, we would do that at this point in the meeting. Jeff or Craig, do you guys have any recommendations, if they just give me a general guidance on how, how I should move forward, just bidding those two jobs out at this point, or?
Craig, jump in if you want on this one, bidding questions, so. Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, I'm here.
You catch that?
I, I, could you repeat it?
So, so we, it's regarding the ARPA funds. Right now, the city has about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's been deposited into their accounts. We were going to go out and try to get materials for water and sewer projects, so we have them on hand, because a lot of them are long lead items. But without getting that second installment, I've kind of held up on, on doing that, because I didn't want to spend all the money on just materials.
I might jump in here for a moment. Wouldn't we be better off calling the state and finding out when to expect the money, rather than replanning everything until we know for sure whether, when we're going to get it? As far as I know, there's been no reneging on that. So I think we should at least try to get the money before we reschedule everything.
Well, I guess this, this was my thought, is put these two projects out to bid, and then when that, that next allotment comes in, then we can take inventory of what we needed, what we need for the other projects, and then try to get the remaining materials.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yeah, if I could, I, I think that would be a better approach, just from a from the budgetary standpoint, wouldn't necessarily want to incur that. That account payable without having that ARPA funding. Specifically earmarked in our budget for that purpose. That's my thought on it.
We can try to make calls this week and, and find out at least from the other cities what they're expecting.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes.
Looking at last year's, we got it around deeper July last year.
That's probably who will get it.
Mr. Rainey, how much are you wanting to go out, or what are you expecting this project to cost? Because we only have left four hundred and seventeen thousand.
Right, I think both of them should be well under that. But with cost of materials and how busy the contractors have been, I would expect that there's probably going to be an increase, because I think we were probably estimating around two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for the, the two of them. But with that, the bidding climate, it's hard to say.
Alan, I think what would be best is if you would bring some of this to us on Friday. Let's have a regular meeting and work this out internally, and then we can, if we have questions, then we can bring it back to council.
Okay, well, what, yeah, so that would be putting, putting something out to bid another three weeks down the road. So I was thinking, if we can, we could start contacting contractors next week for the two projects. That was.
Well, if you have everything lined up this weekend, we can certainly let council know by email or something, if, if you want to move forward. I don't think anyone would have an objection to moving forward, as long as we're getting the money, because that was the plan.
I can call tomorrow and see what's the status of it, I don't know if the ARPA reporting has anything to do with this, since we just submitted it in April. But I can call the US Treasury and see what we're looking at tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. Okay.
Then we, we'd be running into a potential OPMA issue if we're taking action outside of a regular council meeting. So we would, at, to Alan's point, we want to provide him with some direction, I guess, during, during this meeting, perhaps with contingencies.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I make a motion to allow Mr. Rainey to put the two out to bid, and we've got funds to cover it. Let's just get it moving.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Read aye.
Well, clear. Send it away.
What's with aye?
Okay, thank you.
We will finish that up and get it out to bid.
What are you bidding at the bid, Hope Lane and what?
Hope Lane and the four fourteen Ninth Street Sewer. So that's a relocation that, that goes from Ninth Street all the way through Seventh.
And those were, those projects were on the list.
Yes.
And we approved already, so.
Yes, yep. Okay, and that's, I guess, all I was going to hit unless anybody else has questions on anything else.
We do. Madam Mayor, may I address Mr. Rainey? So where are we at on the Citywide SCADA project? I know we've been working on it. What do we got left? Be integrated?
Let's see, I believe we have lift station number five, which is on Babs west of Ninth Street. And that's one project that we're, I guess I didn't mention that, that we're, we're putting in for county RCCF fund exchange money. And so SCADA will be added to that, that's the radio telemetry. And then the other lift station is number three, which is down by the fire station. That one needs radio telemetry added. And I believe with that, we should be pretty well caught up on, on all our SCADA system. So I think we're just about done getting the, the entire system, water and sewer on the SCADA.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to know. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Mr. Rainey? Right, hearing then, we have the Code Enforcement Animal Control Report and Jennifer is here, if you'd like to say something.
Well, if you don't want me to go over the report, then that's fine, or should I?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks. All right, so this report is for two months. It generally is monthly, so we're going from March twelfth to May twelfth of two thousand and twenty-two. Public contacts was three hundred and sixty-eight. There is a rise in that because I was doing only in-person contacts when I was reporting last time. So these are actually like phone calls, emails, in-person contacts as well. Notice to complies, warnings, violations, dog patrol seventeen, stop work orders four, which included no permit or business license. Junk vehicles is thirteen, weeds, trash and debris was two, RV trailer boat was five, impounded animals was twelve dogs, returned to owners is eight, released to rescue is three. There's two injured animals and seven welfare checks. For the permits issued, there was eleven residential homes, three HVAC replacement or installs, two right-of-way alterations, one business for a business sign for commercial, two new fences, patio cover, two re-ruffs, a new LP tank for commercial and for inspection scheduled for that time period was two hundred and thirty-five. And then back was just some, some training that I was able to attend. They were all on webinars and interesting and looking forward to learning more and glad to be a part of the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks Jenny. Madam Mayor, may I make one comment? One thing that wasn't noted on here, I mean, I think the reporting looks really great, is there's been an increase in graffiti that we've noticed.
Excuse me, Sarah, could you be closer? Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to thank Jenny again, and one thing that's not reported on here that I know Jenny's been hard at work at besides all the other increases in her request is graffiti abatement. So when we've been walking, just walking on the trails of citizens and out doing cleanup, we've noticed an increase in graffiti. And while we have an interlocal agreement to get that cleaned up, she's also been working on getting some of that cleaned up and was able to take off vandalism on the orbital marker just yesterday.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry I didn't include that.
So to touch base on that, are we reporting that to the sheriff's office, making sure that they're aware of that?
You know what, honestly, I did not report it to the sheriff's office, that's a good.
We need to make sure that we're making those reports. If we're taking care of it, that's fine, but they need to know about it so they can be watching for it.
Yeah, I actually want to make contact so we can have maybe a little bit communication between the sheriff's department and code enforcement for when they go out on calls and stuff and it looks for. So I'm looking forward to that in the future and I will take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Jennifer? Okay, hearing that, thank you. All right. Now it's time for any council committee reports. Anyone have committee reports?
I can't remember the date right now, but it was the first Wednesday of the month. I chaired the Planning and Marketing Committee for the Ben Franklin Transit. We discussed and put onto the main agenda some items such as free fares for children under the age of eighteen. This is a new directive from the state for some grant funding that they're really released recently. It was quite significant. So we're running a pilot program. It went through the main agenda on the following Thursday, which I attended that meeting as well. And that pilot program will run from now first of June through November first. And so if anybody has any children eighteen and under that would like a free bus pass, they need to contact the transit so we can push that program along. And I can't think of anything else of super significance. We're still looking for our general manager. And they're starting to bring back the transit in-person meetings, so if anybody's interested.
Ben Franklin Transit also provides free transit to seniors too, I believe.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
I, I attended the Benton County Mosquito Control, April twenty-fifth. They're just ramping up, they've, haven't had a lot of mosquito issues right now, but obviously now that the weather's getting warmer, I'm pretty sure the next meeting we'll hear more about the mosquitoes and how much they're running into, so.
Yeah, I've been noticing there's a lot of tires around.
Yes, they ended up getting so many tires from that drive, they ended up getting way more than they've ever gotten. So it turned out to be a great drive and I think they look forward to doing it again.
That's good.
That's good.
Anyone else? I know that Sarah Funk and I attended the Friends of Badger Mountain Meeting and they gave a nice presentation on getting the railroad bridge, hopefully, and connecting the trails through Red Mountain over to, through the railroad bridge. And so a lot of people are very excited about that and so that, that was nice that we were mentioned and.
Madam Mayor, if I may also add, the Friends of Badger Mountain Annual Event that I attended, it was really great to see the municipalities and the cities and the counties working with not-for-profits so actively to do great things for the community. They just acquired, as many people may have seen, the largest parcel of land connecting their trail system. And they've been very strategic and diligent and hardworking to get that accomplished. So it was really, they were really, they are really excited about Benton City and it's great news for our community and the region.
Right. We also had the bike, bike race, Century Bike Race. And they all stopped at the fire station and got refreshments, so that was a good day. And also there was the mothers, mother-daughter tea at noon on that same day, so that was a busy day for us. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So now we were going to move L one and L two next. And that first one, L one was fire inspections and business licenses. So, Mr. Reed, are you going to handle that?
I sure can.
Okay.
So Rebecca brought it to my attention that we we are currently doing safety inspections on businesses here, occupiable businesses here in Benton City, and that also includes duplexes, fourplexes, on and so forth. And what a lot of the discussion was, there's kind of two or three parts to it. Number one is the city has been paying for the actual business license versus the occupant paying for it. It hasn't been reflecting in our fee scale. And don't quote me Rebecca, I think we're losing about nine to ten thousand dollars a year.
What we've actually been paying for is the fire inspections.
The, the actual fire inspections.
Yeah, so yeah, we're about, we're losing about something like that.
Yeah, about nine to ten thousand dollars a year. And what I would like to discuss is amending the, the city code eventually to reflect making the fire inspections
Mandatory.
Mandatory and adjusting our fee scale for what we actually charge for business license for these occupiable businesses. With that, I asked Assistant Chief Bates to be here tonight to kind of explain the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau situation we have here in Benton City, which is, it's actually a really good thing to talk about the improvements that the city and the fire department have made to lower insurance rating for our area. And if I can, I'm going to have him come up and speak on that about the importance of these inspections in that process.
Doesn't matter.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The letter I passed around was from the Washington Surveys and Ratings Bureau. We were just recently rerated and we have a protection class three out of seventy-five communities in the state of Washington that are rated. We're one of the seventy-five that are three or below. The fire life safety inspections make up sixteen percent of this, and that's control of the city. The other high portion of that is the water supply. You own the water supply, we help with testing the hydrants and so on, and we have been interlokal to work back and forth to help with those things. So forty-one percent of the rating is the city, forty percent of it is the fire department, nine percent is emergency communications. So those life safety inspections, whoever, however it's paid for are vital to this rating. As that number gets bigger, the people in our community, not just the business owners, everybody in the city of Benton City, if that number goes up, pays more for their fire insurance, okay? Department, we like to use that as a gauge of how we're doing, okay? Same, same with the city, we worked for years with Spink Engineering, the city to connect the water. So we have a loop system and replacing lines and the water tower project and so on. And have had an excellent relationship and we've taken the city of Benton City being rated, I think years ago it was a six or seven.
Yes.
And then we brought it down to a five and we keep working and chipping away at that, we're down to a three. Rated better than many of the communities around us, and we are rated very well for the size of our community, very excited about that. A lot of hard work by the city and are very, very dedicated volunteers, very proud. So I also have in here the breakdown for the city rating, and it shows if anybody wants it, it's available through the department, I have a copy here that you're welcome to. It kind of breaks down what the, what the actual rating is for what, so we can all work to, you know, go towards that. It's not the only driving force in how we take care of our community. We're always trying to do the right things for the right reasons for our citizens and protect everybody at the utmost. But as we plan our projects and do things such as modifying, you know, how, how business inspections are done, the life safety inspections are done, we need to keep this in the forefront of our mind because it's another way that we can take care of our community. So nobody these days has a whole lot of extra pocket change and there's no reason to pay it, how to fire insurance if you don't have to. Be happy to take any questions on this, try and fill anything in I can. Like I said, I can leave this here for you guys or you can come down or I'm glad to come in at any time and explain this.
I'd like to have a copy of it for our records, so we would understand every, every part of it. But all in all, I'm very pleased that we're able to get the lower insurance rates now, and I'm sure all the citizens are happy as well.
Yeah. It's a, it's a good thing when we can, you know, point everything in the right direction and make those things happen, so we're very proud of it.
Okay.
Anything else I can?
Think we're good?
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything more about the fees or anything like that?
Um, I'm going to ask Rebecca, if she doesn't mind, kind of explain our current situation and you know, I could, I could throw out some proposals of where we can go with this.
Current situation is business licenses are fifty-five per new, thirty for renewals, home occupations are fifteen and ten. And we are being charged by Northwest Code seventy-five every time. So we're basically losing with new business licenses, we're losing twenty bucks each. With renewals, we're losing forty-five. With home occupations, we're losing sixty and sixty-five. So we're losing quite a bit of money every time because they are, per the SWSRB mandatory for as Bill Reece said, stick, stick buildings. These fire inspections, what are they called?
Go ahead.
These fire inspections do not pertain to contractors or out-of-town businesses that come in and do something. It's just for physical businesses here in the city of Benton.
Yeah, yeah, those. Occupable structures.
Yeah. So.
Business license.
You'll see that in the packet, Jenny did a report of Benton City Business Fire Inspection Report. So last year, just by calculating, we, it would have been almost five thousand dollars just last year and then so on and so forth. So that's what we could have made, but we didn't because we, like I said, we're paying out of them, paying it for, out of our pocket with the difference of business licenses. One of the things that me and Councilman, Councilmember Reed discussed was the fees to business licenses. And even though we go through the state, we still have to do our part. It's not just click, yes, you're done, you know? And for us, when we get a business license application, it comes into our system, JB receives it, verifies all the information is correct, makes sure that the UBI is up to date, contractor's license up to date, all that kind of stuff before he actually sends it back to say yes or no. One of the other steps we're going to start be doing is with this being that they are mandatory and required now with Jenny involved, any business license that does come up for renewal or new will be given to Jenny to do, to advise Northwest Code, if that's what we're going to be doing, to do the inspection, once we get the inspection back, then we'll approve it. We're not just going to go ahead and approve it without that fire inspection. Last time we discussed this, we had discussed putting it on them to be done, but then Councilman Sandrell said, you know, it'd be, we would need to make sure that they're all unified, make sure that everything is the same because different companies can do different things. So that's where we're at, seeing if we're going to have Northwest Code do them, then we know at least the price, we already know they're seventy-five dollars. And have them pay for it, get it done, and then give, issue them their business license before they move forward. And the last time we talked, I had informed Mr. Reed that we, we do home occupations, well, they actually still go through the state. The state sends them to us. The state sends them to us, we still have to do the checklist.
Through the same E-file system.
Yeah, but Jenny has to do the checklist for them, and then we'll just add the step of getting the fire inspections on. But what we need to determine now, um, is whether we're gonna have them pay for it and do it. Or are we gonna tack it on to our current business license price?
So we also did a lot of research on uh, communities our size. Um, and what they're paying for business license and their, their actual process that they go through. E-file system is, is mandatory now, nobody can escape it, it's kind of the state's way of governing uh, business licenses. Um, so basically, they file through the state, that information comes back to us, we approve it, disapprove it, um, at that point. Uh. Jenny has to go out, make contact with that person, get all that stuff scored away, or JB has to give them a call, maybe their UBI number or something is. Is not documented or business license or anything, so there, there is a little bit of work in this. Um, one of the things that we did, did do was we went out and researched other communities, very similar to uh, ours. Uh, size-wise and population-wise, and we are actually. Most, most of those business licenses came back at what, ninety to a hundred and thirty dollars? Range, so obviously, we're a lot cheaper, but we're also losing a lot of money by the city paying for those business like, or business inspections where in the other cities. The business owner pays for them. Um, going back to the original conversation, though, if. And I'm gonna speak personally, you know, being a homeowner, but if I was a business owner. Um, if I was paying seventy-five dollars a year to have my business license renewed. Versus, or uh, for the building inspection versus not having that building inspection. The WSRB rating's gonna change, and the insurance is gonna go up, not only for the businesses, but even for the housing. Uh, independent house, households, so. It's one of those discussions, do we up our prices on our fees? Or do we have a community that the insurance goes up on? And to be honest, I think the insurance is gonna go up a lot more than seventy-five dollars a year.
I think we estimated what, a thousand two hundred a year?
Uh, yeah, minimum, minimum for the businesses, yep.
So they can pay seventy-five dollars one time a year, have Northwest Code go out and do it. Or if our ratings go up, their insurance is gonna go up a hundred dollars a month, and they'll end up paying twelve hundred dollars.
Correct, minimum.
Minimum.
It depends on their type of business and their occupancy, so. Um. My recommendation is we look at that fee scale, and we figure out what's applicable for our businesses and charge accordingly, and uh. Uh, not absorb that cost out of the city funds, because it is for the private businesses.
What we would need to look at for that is then, we know they're gonna be seventy-five dollars, because that's how much the inspection fee's gonna be. It's how much more on top of that we're gonna wanna add, because if they have to be done at renewal and initial, it's gonna be seventy-five dollars a pop every year. So that's where we have to look at, okay, how much more on top of the seventy-five dollars are we wanting to add? Or we just break even with the seventy-five and they get the license for free.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Um, my general thought process on this is that most people are gonna wanna pay a round fee.
Yeah.
Right?
Mm hmm.
So if it's, it's seventy-five dollars, renewals probably should be a hundred, and a new license one twenty-five. That being said, has anybody researched to see if there's anybody cheaper than Northwest Code?
Uh, we're currently, currently contracted with them at least until December.
December, yeah, December of this year.
Okay, I, I'm just asking the question, because if we can find somebody doing it for fifty bucks, we can pass that on to our, our businesses. But um, I would be in favor of raising it right now to that, so that we cover that cost. That's been my big complaint. All the way through working with planning, inspections, all of them. We shouldn't be paying out of pocket. So, we, we need to make sure that that, that gets covered one way or another.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I, but I do wanna state for the record that without this inspection, people are gonna be paying, community-wide homeowners and businesses. Are gonna be paying a lot higher insurance rates, so for just the businesses to be paying to compensate some of the fee. And having that in our fee scale accordingly is gonna keep our fire insurance and our rating way down. Which, obviously, by the letter. Is, is a really good achievement. We are one of the very few rural communities in Washington that has. A rating scale this well, and it's between the city and the fire department, doing an awesome job.
Uh, would you like to um, bring this back on the fee schedule at the next council meeting and? Uh, we can make some choices and have some options at that time.
What I can do is, sorry, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off. What I can do is, um, okay, so we know it's gonna be seventy-five, because that's the fire inspection. Bring different options of how much more do you guys wanna go? Bring the option of twenty dollars more, thirty dollars more, you know?
I think Mr. Sandretto had a good point between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five somewhere is what he.
Yeah, so the renewals, and so then that would mean it's, the renewals would cost twenty-five, and then um.
Fifty.
Fifty for the, for the business licenses.
Yes.
And then if that is what we are gonna, gonna wanna do, then I will have to contact the state so they can adjust their prices, because it's off of our stuff. So it'll have to be a, a resolution amendment and an ordinance amendment.
Okay, so we'll bring those back next, next time. Well, did you have any other questions, Ms. Funk?
I did, yeah, thank you so much. Um, further to Councilman Sandretto's point, I'm looking at. If there's a cheaper option than Northwest Code after the current contract expires in December of twenty twenty-two. Appreciate, I should also start by saying thanks to everyone for doing the research, because it's a really big deal. It matters a lot. When you think about companies that can do this in the area and their pricing, are there any that you can, that could be considered unified? Because some businesses we've heard are actually paying for another fire inspection on their own, and we don't really know why. So I don't know if there's a possibility or an option to make sure people aren't getting hit twice. Maybe you have a transition period that makes sense, maybe you don't, that's in the weeds, we'll look for a recommendation. But I, we've heard from businesses that some of the businesses are paying anyway to have a fire inspection done, and then the city's doing it again. So is there, you know, a path that we can help with, so people are only having, the businesses are only having to pay once?
Why? Can I address that? So one of the things that I heard last meeting is um, fire extinguishers, and looking at that, that's a whole separate deal. And it's a whole separate inspection process than the building inspection. So i- if that's where we're talking, the two separate, that's, that's something that um, with the fire extinguishers. People like Oxarc have to hydro test the extinguisher body if it's past a certain date. They have to discharge, refill those extinguishers in some cases if the. Um, pressures are down, and then they have to re-tag them and re-seal them every year. So that, that's, that's a cost. Uh, my business goes through it in Pasco, we, we not only pay for a, a building inspection. They come in, make sure that the egresses are clear, the exits are up, but then I have to every year, take all the fire extinguishers. Load them up, take them down Oxarc, and that's an additional cost, about two hundred dollars or something, so. Um. Two separate animals.
Same for my business, and that's a great clarification. Maybe it can just be a messaging as we work to make these changes, so that this, other people, other businesses can understand it better.
Yeah.
And that was the, the ordinance changes clarifying.
Fire building.
Fire building inspections and uh, clarifying the requirements of that.
Mm hmm. Um, you had recommended bring it back at the next one, that would be June seventh. Right?
Sure.
You want the ordinance and everything, but then you just want the price?
Yeah, we could do it up, uh. Bring it back for a discussion item.
Um, my, my thoughts on it is bring back your ordinance is ready to go, and uh, as well as some options. Um, that we can adjust if we need to, but I, I think that option that we just talked about, the one twenty-five, one hundred is probably the way to go. I think, looking around the room, I don't think there's too many people in opposing that, so. I'd probably go with that one. And then I'd also research and see if we can find a different inspection piece.
Okay, so I have noted to table this. And bring back June seven with ordinance and resolution for price change and updated verbiage.
Yeah, we don't need to table it, it's, it's just a discussion item right now, right?
Well, that's usually the word I use, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okey dokey.
Okay. Anything further on this before we move on?
Thank you.
Okay, um. Our next um, item is a presentation, and um. We have Brian here from FirstNet, and I believe he's going to be online and present this um. Over the um, Zoom, so can we give him the screen, please? Brian, are you here?
Yeah, mic check, can you hear me okay?
Okay.
Brian, are you gonna be doing the share screen?
Yeah, if I could have presenter rate, that would be fantastic. And Madam Mayor, how much time do we have allotted for this particular agenda item?
Um, I don't have any specific time, but we do have a very full agenda tonight, so if it could be like within fifteen minutes, could you do that?
Yeah, no problem. We can give you a kind of a good synopsis of the FirstNet program and, you know, keep it a little truncated, so we don't keep people here all night, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Brian, I've made you co-host, so you're able to do a share screen.
Yep, see it, love it, thank you. Okay, so uh, well, first of all, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, citizens of Benton City, uh, my name's Brian Rogers, I support FirstNet qualified agencies in Washington State. Um, I'm not, I'm located not too far from you, I'm here in Richland. Um, and some of you may remember discussing FirstNet on a city council meeting a few months ago. I know the council was interested in the price comparison, I prepared that in addition to, just I had a little overview of the FirstNet program. And an updated coverage map uh, specific to the city, so. FirstNet was actually um, it, it's a regulated government program, and it was something that was identified as a need after the attacks of nine eleven. Um, so there was two major issues, there's the issue of interoperability, um, and the issue of congestion on the cell sites themselves. So in two thousand and four, they came out with um, the nine eleven commission report. And in that commission report, they just did a post-op review of um, how to, you know, prevent issues like this from going forward. And one of the items in the commission report was to have a public safety network dedicated to first responders and local government agencies. Um, and then if you fast forward to March of two thousand and ten, the FCC took the commission's recommendation to create a nationwide public safety broadband mobile network. And then the wheels for FirstNet were put into motion, so uh, our governing body, the FirstNet Authority, was um, created to develop and oversee the implementation of the public safety network. We've worked very closely with them on pricing and where we put up new cell sites to ensure that they're gonna best support public safety. Um, they looked at actually trying to build out and support the network themselves, but to put together an infrastructure from the ground up was just gonna be too costly. So they took bid, and AT&amp;T submitted a bid of forty billion dollars and won the rights to build out and maintain the FirstNet uh, network going forward. So that was in March of two thousand and seventeen, um, and then in December, all the states and territories opted in, said, yes, we wanna work with FirstNet. Um, and we'll work closely with understanding how to best fill in these coverage gaps, particularly in rural areas. And how to best protect the network maybe from a cybersecurity perspective and to harden the network, so think. Um, you know, additional fixed generators, additional fibers run to the site to ensure that if there is a power outage or a fiber cut. Um, we don't skip a beat when it comes to providing connectivity to public safety, so. We play by a different set of rules than your quintessential wireless provider like, you know, T-Mobile or US Cellular, because. Um, we understand the need for mobile network and mobile data, and we've got a lot of first responders on that network, so. Um. Yeah, our uh, it's the first ever public-private partnership, and it's a twenty-five-year commitment with the FirstNet Authority for us to physically, um, to support a physically separate network core. Which ensures that FirstNet users are always gonna get priority and permission on the network. I think the most relatable example is if you've ever been to a, a concert or sporting event, maybe go to Lumen Field, you watch the Seahawks play. It can be really hard to get a call out from that stadium due to congestion, right? You got a lot of users in a concentrated area. FirstNet uses Band fourteen technology, so it's a bandwidth that's dedicated to public safety, and it really reduces the traffic. So if I take my FirstNet device, um, and go watch the Seahawks play, I don't know why you would do that this year, but if you went to the game this year, uh, it would work great if you're using FirstNet. Um, and that's just because you're operating with a completely different frequency from the commercial user. And then, as I alluded to, um, you know, this is a, a pretty significant investment from AT&amp;T. Um, is, the winning bid was forty billion dollars, but there's no cost to taxpayers. Um, you just have to qualify for access to the network, and so law, medical, and fire do, and local government entities also themselves qualify for access to the FirstNet network. And um, typically, you're gonna see about a thirty-five percent price reduction from our commercial offerings, so the rate plans are about thirty-five percent cheaper on FirstNet than what we offer an AT&amp;T commercial user. So these are just kind of some of the six, uh, I guess, prominent differentiators between FirstNet and your typical commercial network. Um, we're contracted out by the FirstNet Authority to um, maintain coverage for ninety-nine percent of the populace. And our network, um, FirstNet users will always get priority level access for their voice, text, and data services on our network. We also have roaming partners such as US Cellular and Inland Cellular, if you travel east. Um, you can pick up their sites as a FirstNet user, and you get priority access on their sites as well. Um, our network is uh, encrypted from end to end all the way through the back hall, so cybersecurity is becoming something that's a little bit more prevalent in today's day and age. Um, as requested by the FirstNet Authority, we're the only network that encrypts the data that's sent from the, the end user. And that's encrypted all the way to the core through the back hall and out back to the site, so. Um, for public safety apps, this fourth bullet point here, you get access to a breadth of, of um, apps that you can download to the device at no cost, they're all free. And you know, think um, iSpy or um, iCam, some of the popular uh, apps that are used by public safety. Um. We provide twenty-four seven tech support, um, and customer service, of course. I always ask my customers to reach out to me, if they can make it the first line of defense, if you need any um, support plan. And um, our plans are a little unique in the sense that um, we're contractually obligated to provide the user with the fastest data speeds possible at all times, we can never throttle. Our plans work international, it's a North America footprint, so you could take the device to Canada or Mexico, and there's no additional expenditures that occurred with that, um, there's no cost, so. Uh, quick overview of the coverage map in around the city, you can see the red circles on the screen, those are our cell sites. Um, and we've got one there in Benton City, and all of our sites um, that are close to the city have Band fourteen overlay, so they're all overlaid with that public safety network. Uh, your typical coverage radius from a site like this, a macro site can be about fifteen to eighteen miles on the coverage radius. So you can see that for the most part, we're green on the map, um, and there's a few splotches of orange, which you could pick up our roaming partner in those areas, that would be um, US Cellular. And then blue would be moderate coverage, but for the most part, and I know Madam Mayor and I did some testing at a lot of sites that are pertinent to the city. Um, you'll Sheriff's Building, Library, um, and we pulled really good speeds, and had a really strong ping rate everywhere we tested. So we know it works really well, um, at those city buildings inside and out, um, but there's a coverage map just um, for your own identification. And then so this is what we proposed, um, so right now, the city's using um, US Cellular, and they've got thirteen lines on a US Cellular plan. Um, we're proposing to provide the users with iPhones or Samsung S twenty FEs. Um, we can provide the, the devices at no cost if it's an iPhone twelve, uh, if the user like an iPhone thirteen, it's a hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the equipment cost. And then you can see the corresponding rate plan under monthly per device column, so it's thirty-nine ninety-nine, that gives the user unlimited everything. And for five dollars more, uh, the user can actually use their um, city-assigned cell phone as a hotspot, so they'd have unlimited hotspot from the smartphone itself. Um, currently, the city has two iPads on that US Cellular plan. Um, they've got one flip phone or feature phone, one of those old school devices. Um, and then we're proposing putting uh, mobile broadband, which is gonna give you unlimited internet access from one of our Netgear Nighthawks, think of it as just portable internet on the go. Um, and that's thirty-six dollars and eighty cents for that rate plan, so the proposal in uh, total summation is five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. And that comes with $2,150 in activation credit that would show up on the city's bill. And then if you want to compare that with what you're paying today, with the monthly estimate, what you'd pay per year, less the credits, your year one estimate all in is going to be $4,137.88. And the next slide will show you actually what you're paying currently with US Cellular. So with US Cellular, the monthly bill estimate there highlighted in yellow is $738. And one of the lines at the shop, we're paying for internet. It's $100 there for that device. And you can compare that with what we're proposing on FirstNet. It's a pretty good savings. It's about $5,914 annually, is what the savings would equate to. Which incidentally, the delta from the lost revenue of those business licenses. So there you go. And then we would provide in this scenario tablets and smartphones for free, but again, we do on the right-hand side. You've got options. If you need a device with a little bit more substance to it, you could pick out an iPhone 13 or Samsung S22 and you can see the corresponding costs there on the right-hand side. So I'll stop here. I think I'm well within 15 minutes and just make myself available to answer any questions from city council or anybody else.
I would like to add to your presentation, Brian, because we didn't get into kind of the overall picture. We're not proposing to get rid of the hardwired network and that we have here. But I was thinking we could use this mobile network, especially in places like the community center. If we had this mobile network set up there, then we could have computer classes, things like that down there at the community center for very reasonable prices. Could also be put into some of our other buildings that we, you know, that we have, the shop and others. But that was kind of my goal is to have a mixture. And we actually used one of these phones. Actually, Jennifer, you used one of these phones for a while and we had an outage during that time, right? And you were able to stay online because you were using this device? Yes, please.
Yeah. Hi, Brian. So I did trial. It was the Nighthawk. So it was a mobile unit and it, I'm not super savvy with technology, but it was pretty impressive. I never lost connection. Of course, with anything, you know, mobile, it doesn't need to be charged. So you do have a battery life on it. But like the mayor was saying, the one day we had a power outage and the internet actually was down here in Benton City. And so it did accommodate the employees to hook up all to that, that unit. So that was it. I mean, I was pretty impressed. I also utilized it when I went to training in Seattle and everybody's trying to connect to the internet. I had no problem with like, you know, my laptop and, you know, an iPad. And so there were several units attached to it. So yeah.
Well, thank you. So it could represent a cost savings for our phones as it is now compared to what we're paying. And also if we could expand that network to go into the community center, I think it would be great. Then we could have, like I said, a lot of these classes for adults and for children on the internet.
Yeah. And thanks for the feedback, Jennifer. So what I put together in the proposal includes one of those mobile data devices, the Netgear Nighthawks, that can support up to 10 devices being connected to it simultaneously. If you wanted to add more devices, the monthly rate is $36.80 per device, just as an FYI there. So that would obviously bring up the cost there from the monthly bill estimate of $523.99. But what I put together in the initial proposal, it does include one of those Nighthawks and we can provide the unit at no cost. So there's no upfront or capex cost associated with the switch.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Are there any questions for Brian or any initial reaction to this proposal?
If it saves money and it's better, I don't see what, there's nothing to react to than say we should look at it. As long as we're not going to be taking down any hard lines or anything. That's my concern with this building for sure. And we do have fiber coming in here. Is that right?
I think so. We have, I don't know if Charter or Zipley, I think.
We have both of them in here because prior to me getting here, it's my understanding that they were converting from Zipley to Charter, but then Stephanie and Paula left, so I got kind of hacked in half. So we have both of them in here. And then when Ron was here, he put it on pause until I don't know when. And they just started reaching out to me earlier about two weeks ago to see what's the status of converting all our lines from Zipley to Charter. But that was a process that started before I got here. So I'm trying to catch up on what lines have already been converted and what lines haven't and where we stand with all of that. So.
I know. I think Wade can attest how long it took to get Charter down to the, to the shop. How long did it?
To finish it, probably a year and a half.
Yeah, so.
My stuff. About the time we didn't need it anymore.
Yeah. So this, this FirstNet presentation would basically be our cell phones and mobile internet is what it would be. And my thoughts on it, recently I got approached by maintenance wanting hotspots on their phones so they can connect their laptops if they're not at the office. And I was like, well, that's going to be way too much. If we're paying so much and then they want unlimited hotspots on their phones, what do we have to monitor what they're using it for? So then that's when the mayor brought this up. And so it's your guys' decision. I just, the only question I have for Brian is if we still owe some of the phones, will you guys pay that off? Or is that something we're going to have to pay off before we can get out?
Yes, we will. Good point. So in the proposal included $2,150 in credits. If the costs exceed that from the remaining installment on the devices, FirstNet will fund the difference. We just need that in a bill. And then we'll give you supplemental credit that will even out whatever you have to pay. I don't think it's going to be more than $2,150, but if it is, I've included that in the proposal and we'll fund it.
So then I guess the next thing is I would have to see how much we actually owe on cell phones, the devices themselves. Because I know mine's new, the mayor's is new, and we just had one replaced. So I would have to see how much we actually owe on cell phones, the devices, before we decide what we want to do to see what the cost would be out of pocket or whatever.
Yeah. And every user will keep their same number with US Cellular. So nobody has to get a new number. We'll just take that number and bring it over to FirstNet. And then a really good point about those hotspots, it truly is unlimited. So, so pretty unique. I haven't seen that with a mobile hotspot option through the smartphone. You can use it as much as you need. And again, there's no throttle.
So what direction does the council want me to do? Figure out our bills first?
I'd like to see what we would owe, what credits we would get, what the cost would be.
Okay. And then come back to you guys and let you guys know.
It's cost neutral. Are we fine knowing that it's cost neutral because we'll get credits?
Oh, I would like to know what the information is before we make the decision on it. That's.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we move forward with getting a package together, what our costs are, what it's going to cost us to move, to move and bring it back as a full proposal.
Okay, so second.
My second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Well, correct.
Sandro.
What's with aye?
Okay. Thank you, Brian. It looks like it's unanimous and we will move forward. Thank you for your time.
So Brian, I will be with the information from US Cellular as to what we owe, and then we'll get a full proposal package together.
Good. That sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. So moving on. All right. So now is the time for public hearings. And Millie Ann, are you going to be? Are you going to? Okay. Good evening. So please say your name for the.
Good evening. I am Emily Wymer from AHBO. Hopefully you can hear me well. Tonight, I'll be presenting the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's an open record public hearing to discuss the docket. This year's docket is comprised of four map changes, land use map changes and one text change. You've been presented with the dockets and the recommendation of the planning commission extensively at your previous meeting. So I won't go over all those details again unless there's any additional information that's requested. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to, one, take public comment and two, for council to direct staff on how we should prepare an ordinance to bring to your next meeting. I do have the PowerPoint slides with the maps from the last presentation available if it's needed. But tonight, we will take public comment.
Okay. So you want a comment from us, too?
Yes.
So I will need to open the public comment period and see if there's anyone that can is wanting to speak. Stuff. Okay, so I'm going to now open the public comment session for the comprehensive plan amendment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss CPA 2021-1. After reviewing it over the past week or so, because I I don't know, had an epiphany last time. I believe this is spot zoning and I'm concerned. There's case law that spot zoning is not applicable or warranted. It is actionable and legally we could be sued for it. So I want to make sure that we're well within our rights before we move forward with anything of that nature.
Can you give us a better handle where this is?
Sure. CPA 2021 is the Olson Brothers Ranches Amendment off of Horn Drive. It's about a two acre parcel. And given its size and its location near the similar land use and zoning, we don't believe that this is specifically a spot zoning.
It's the only R3 going in the middle of an R2 in a commercial zone. I don't know how you cannot call that spot zoning. The definition by that is that it's one specific change in the middle of two different zones. I mean, that is a spot zone.
Well, isn't there similar zoning across the street?
There is similar zoning across the street. If you're looking at the land use, there's similar land use to the south and across the street to the east. So the land use is continuous to the area and the zoning implements that land use and the applicant requested the higher density.
There's R3 zoning where?
I'm sorry, the land use.
Yeah, residential, yeah. But there's no R3 zoning anywhere near that for blocks and blocks. This is essentially putting a ability to put an apartment complex or something of that nature right in the middle of a residential or commercial district. I can't, I cannot, I cannot tell you enough. I believe this is a spot zone. Period.
I can prepare some materials for the next meeting.
I think we should readdress this one, yes.
Just the zoning, not any of the land use.
I want you to tell me how you feel that this is not spot zoning and how we're going to be okay doing it.
I can prepare some materials for next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, it got me a little excited.
And I would, I would add that the whole purpose of the comprehensive planning process is sort of to eliminate the possibility of spot zoning through this process where we're looking at. Because when, when, when you're looking at your future land use map, you're not, you shouldn't be looking at this isolated parcel. You should be looking at the community as a whole and as long as as the change in zoning is consistent with the community character and it's part of a unified plan for the community. You shouldn't have a spot zoning issue, but I understand what your council member Sandro is concerned that, well, this looks like the sort of thing that you would call spot zoning prior to passage of the Growth Management Act and this comprehensive planning process. But I would, I would say that, you know, in particular, you don't see that as much anymore. And it's because of this, this iterative process where you're really looking at, you know, the community as a whole when you're, when you're developing these plans and seeing how it fits in everything else.
I did look at that and there is not an R3 for probably a half a mile in any direction from that location. Had there been additional plots that were going to be R3 for, say, a commercial development where we're putting in apartments or whatever, that to me would be okay. That doesn't, that doesn't classify as a spot zone. That, that classifies as a redistrict, if you will. Right? To an R3 area. This appears to be one specific loss in the middle of an R2 commercial area, period. That concerns me.
It is over two acres. So a spot zone is more of like a quarter acre or neighborhood parcel. So it's given the size, in the future, it will likely be subdivided, but this is, we're talking about two acres. So it's not a little spot on a map. It's a pretty significant area. And I think the size is the distinction.
If you can, if you can bring me back, make me feel good about it, we're good. But right now, I don't feel good about it. Okay. And that's the only thing I had to discuss.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this?
Madam Mayor, Jeff Franch matter here. I have a couple of comments.
Yes.
So just in review of our comp plan, I think that it might be worthwhile to have a bit of a citizens advisory group or citizens advisory council to help provide some visioning around what the, the evolution of the town ought to look like or what people's intentions are. Because to Sandro's point, I believe that, you know, if there's no real collective vision in terms of, you know, downtown core and what we want to, where we want to see development, I think we're going to have more of these issues arise. So just, just want to bring about the notion of potentially trying to put together just some, some citizens advisory or, or a group to help provide some input, to help shape some of these things that, so there is a bit of a collective vision going forward for the town. And I just sort of see that as being absent at the moment. So just, just wanted to share those thoughts and comments.
Emily, how do you see something like that working with you in this planning process?
That's something we can discuss for the 2022 amendment cycle. Those applications are due, I believe, at the end of July, July, yes. So that's something we can discuss for this process. I mean, it's already got through the process, so we can't change anything at the moment. For 2021, we were just doing cleanup, basically looking at some areas we had identified as urgent. So now that we've done sort of the cleanup, we can talk about that for the 2022 amendments.
So what happens with Mr. Sandro's objection? Does this get pulled from the plan or how does that work?
I can read it back next meeting with some more information. And then you can as a council, decide how you want to move forward. So you can approve as proposed. You can approve everything except for that one parcel. It's really up to council's discretion how they want to proceed. There's certainly many options you can take. There's certainly many options you can take.
Okay. So is everyone all right with doing that, having it at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Will that give you all enough time? Okay.
And I can prepare an ordinance if you'd like to entertain that.
Okay.
If Madam Mayor may have the floor.
Yes, you may.
If that's the only concern that we have, which is very, very valid and appropriate, and there's no other public comments, could it be appropriate to approve as amended? And just have that one item to come back? Because some of these have been lingering kind of open for a while. There's no other objection and it's deemed appropriate.
I think that's possible. Is that possible?
This is just a public hearing. We have to bring back an ordinance for first and then a second reading to approve it all. I, yes, I can prepare the ordinance for first reading next meeting and see how that goes.
So will it have to be a public hearing again or just provide the information to Mr. Sandretto before we do the ordinance?
You can, council can request additional public hearings if they find it necessary, but we don't have to hold anymore.
Okay. All right. So we'll bring this back then to next council meeting and see where that goes. Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, you got to close the public comment part of this.
Thank you. I was thinking we have four of them, don't we?
Yeah, but you got to close one before you open another one.
Okay. So that particular public comment period is now closed. Okay. The next public hearing is regarding the first reading of Title 17 amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission. So I'm going to open the public hearing now. And Millie Ann, you're going to do this one, okay?
I'm Millie Ann Bandeender, contract planner for Benton City. Worked for AHBL. Some of you are new but familiar faces. I know that Nicole, my coworker, was here a few weeks ago and gave you a real quick rundown of the amendments, the proposed amendments for Title 17, and a couple of you have heard them before. So really, your purpose right now is to hold the open record hearing or the legislative hearing to take public comment. I can run through another summary of the amendments or I can just take questions first, however you want to do it.
What does council prefer? Do you just want to go to public hearing or do you want to refresh your on this Title 17?
We can meet public here, I think.
So, okay, moving forward then, okay. All right, are there any people here that would like to make a comment? Yes, Mr. Allen.
I believe you have to specifically open the public hearing.
Thank you. I thought I did. I closed one, okay. So the public hearing is now open, Title 17.
Don Allen, 1001 East 7th Street, Benton City. Make sure this thing works because I have a hard time hearing people. You talk kind of like, kind of low and I got my hearing aids, but as high as I can get them, but it ain't working. Anyway, I would like to reserve my questions or comments on Title 17 until after you have your discussions. That way I can determine what I want to say or not say. So I would like to hear that. I would ask the mayor, would you allow me to do that until after you guys have your discussion?
I'm not sure how much we're going to discuss today. We were just going to take public comment.
Okay, well, will you not be discussing this or for not?
I think we will be, we will be probably discussing this. Okay, well, we'll.
After you get done with your discussion, may I speak after that?
Okay, let's see if anyone else wants to speak. And then if they don't, then then you will be probably the only one unless council has some questions. Okay, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this? Yes, Dan Decker.
Don and I talked about this some time back. We probably spent two hours looking at this. And Don went through, has gone through all of this and everything in this Title 17 and he suffered through this dog and pony show. Title 17. And he can fill you in on the fine points of this, but after.
Okay, I'll go.
Okay, let me finish. One last thing. I'll tell you what I see out of this, a cash cow for HBL. And that's it, nothing more. It's disgusting.
Okay. What, I've been through a lot of this. As the last meeting that we had here at city council was on May 3rd, I had different sections that I brought up to a city council to have you all look at. I didn't tell you anything about what I found, what I didn't find, what I liked, what I didn't like. That wasn't discussed. What I asked you to do was to look at it and see if you, and see what you think from your own honest opinions of what you researched that you would have done. My thought was is that the city council was going to have maybe a workshop and talk about this. Now, my question is to you, all of you, did you have that workshop for Title 17? No. So individually, you looked at Title 17, okay? May I ask, I mean, is that something that you, did? What I brought up, do you honestly say you looked at or I'm just asking because my curiosity is up of what's going on. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent. What I'm saying to you is to investigate, to find out what it is, what we're up to. Because as they know, as they put it together, there's been a lot of changes in that code. I think somewhere around the line of maybe 20 pages or so has been added to it overall. And so it started out like a 55 page in the old day. And so now the proposal is it's a little over 70. So that's quite a change. And there's a lot of things that did change and some things added, some things deleted. I mean, that's all a part of it. I understand that many sections of the code that haven't been changed in maybe 30, 40 years, you know, maybe more. I see that. And so the deal is, we need to go forward with something that's going to work for everybody. And if you, if everything is going the way it was written and you're happy with that, then so be it. But if you found things that you didn't like, then of course, this would be the time to do that. In my, my deal, when I was looking at this stuff, I found things that I was concerned about. But if you found no fault in it, then that's the case. That's, I'm not going to say one way or the other. I was hoping that you would go through with that. I find, I ask, did you, if anybody found in the city council, found any concerns whatsoever with this code?
Well, speaking for myself, Mr. Allen, I have been out of town for the last five or six days since I received Title 17. I haven't had the time to review it.
Okay.
So my plan this evening was to either table it for another extension or to push it out at least two weeks to a month.
Yeah.
So I can have time to review it.
I appreciate that. I think, I think that there was a tremendous lot of work went into this title by the aviation. I, they, I'm sure they did. But there is going to be a lot of changes that are coming before the city because of that. And once this passes, that's it, you know? And so whether, whether we have that being accountable or whether it's right or wrong, now's the time to change or make changes because there may very well be things in there that you may not like, okay? And I wouldn't be surprised, and I'm sure they would work with that and talk about that and see where we're going to go with different issues. I understand that, but I do have concerns about it, so.
Well, Don, would you mind sharing with us some of those concerns?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Would you share some of your concerns with us?
Well, one, because of the fact that I did have an experience with it because I'm dealing with it and it was not addressed in the code before, and I'm sure she'll attest to that. Boundary line was basically not even talked about in the old code. Is that not right?
Correct.
That's correct. I mean, it's nothing, I don't think, to speak of.
It was, it was under the short plot section as an exception from short plots and that's it.
That was it.
Benton City had and has an application for boundary line adjustments, but there was no code language. You're correct.
Yes, okay. Now the deal is, I believe there's like three pages that have been added. You know, that you guys brought up that should be brought into the boundary line adjustment, okay? Well, that makes a big change, okay? That's important. Are we happy with that or we're not happy with that? That's, that's one. Short plot, that's another, you know? How that's going to all go about and there were some changes that. Another one, some of the, some of the stuff was, if it was going to be changed, was in red. Am I not correct?
There were different colors because it went through review of internally with us. It went to Alan Rainey and it went to the attorney's office before it even went to the planning commission. So yes, if something was added, it was underlined in a color. And if it was deleted, it was struck through in a color.
But red was, red was used, but that was for the new.
If it was underlined, yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. So all that stuff comes into play. And I'm not trying to discredit what they're doing, what they're not doing, but there's a lot of changes there. And when you add 20 pages to a code, that's a lot. And when you take the ones that you had before and back 40 years ago or so, some of it, and you make changes to it, then you should be aware of those changes and how that's going to affect us and the public and the fees and all the history of it of, is it going to work out? I mean, you know, I mean, when you stop and look at it, is this really going to work out for the people and for the city? We're trying to build a city and we're trying to get growth in here. And we don't want it so cumbersome or, I'm not saying that it is, but I'm just saying we don't want it so cumbersome that keeps people from building here or buying here or living here. All that kind of stuff. Now, I don't think there's a whole lot of land available in Benton City right now. Very, very little, I guess. But still, that's all important. So, okay, I probably took up more than three minutes.
I remember one other thing that you suggested that I think was a very good idea.
You're going to have to speak up.
One other thing that you suggested that I thought was a very good idea was when we send letters out that we reference the section of code that we're quoting. And I thought that was a very good suggestion.
Yeah, I did bring up a thing before and I will restate it again if you allow me to. Applications, no matter what they are, if the city issues an application for whatever reason, I think that it should be brought up about what code sections you're referring to that gives the city the right to do what they're doing. And I'm saying that not to be nasty, I'm saying it to protect not only the city but to safeguard the resident and what that person's trying to do. Because nobody, nobody, if you're trying to do something and it's open ended, what I'm talking about is if you pay an application fee for whatever it is, I'm not saying anything particular, but let's just say it's an application fee. And let's say that it's for, for an application that the city has. And you go ahead and you pay that fee. You don't want them coming after you after it's been done and say, oh, by the way, we forgot about putting this and that in there and now you owe us $500 more. Oh, really? I mean, you know, you don't want that kind of thing. That makes bad relations between everybody.
And hopefully we've improved on that because that was one of the first things I assigned to Millie Ann was I said, I want it all down in writing from top to bottom, so there's no surprises coming back. And I think they did a very good job of pulling all that together. So we have improved that part, I know.
And I think, let's say for an example, just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about. When I say an open ended contract, that's what I'm talking about. So anyway, you have an open contract and you say, by the way, I can decide of what I want to charge you later if I so feel like I want to do so. Well, that doesn't work that way. When you go and buy a car, for an example, and you pay, let's say it's $5,000 and you pay the guy, the dealer or whatever, and you go out the door and you're heading out there and the guy comes running after you and says, oh, by the way, you owe us $350 for undercoating. What do you think's going to happen there? Are you going to pay him? Probably not. That's his problem. It's no different than if you make application here, you want to know what you're buying, you know what the, know what the contract is, what the requirements are, spelled out in everything and all in the language of exactly what you're getting. And to safeguard you and to safeguard the city, that's what it's about. So I'm hoping that's what we, that's what we're about or we should be, in my opinion. So.
I hope so, too.
There it is. I'll stop. Because guess what, folks? I hate to tell you this, but I'm on the next one, too. Go ahead.
I had a couple of quick comments on it. I thought HBL did a great job on this. And my principal task in reviewing it was to make sure that it complied with the state subdivision code, which is RCW 5817. We cannot violate that with our local code because state legislature is who gives us the authority to process subdivisions. And so looking at that, there was a lot of outdated stuff in our code and some inconsistencies there. There were a couple items, the reason why I wanted to comment is just because I missed a couple of things in initial review that I brought up. And just for the purposes of the public hearing today, I wanted to make sure everyone was advised about, you know, what these potential changes would be. And the one is just the exempt, under the exemptions section, both short and long plats. There's a reference to 20 acres and 5817, the state subdivision code exempts five acre land divisions. And so that was a suggestion. And then there's a reference in appeals and it's 1740, 040. It references RITs, which hasn't been around since the Land Use Petition Act became a thing. So just a reference there to filing in Superior Court under the Land Use Petition Act. But it looked really good and just really, really good, good work by HBL. I remember the first time I looked at the site plan section of our code, just being so confused by it. And, you know, that's coming from lawyer. And I'm like, how does the public understand what's going on? And so they've done such a great job of, of making it more readable for people. But, you know, in response to Mr. Allen's comments, it sounds like a lot of that could be achieved maybe through our, our fee schedule and maybe having our application materials reference. You know, you're doing a short plat, these are all, all the costs are going to be associated with that typically.
Yeah, one of the things I mentioned is, once this does pass, then I will update the applications referencing the changes of the code. Because right now, every time I get a short plat or a long plat, I got to call Millie Ann and be like, okay, does this apply? Does this not apply? Because I go off our fee schedule, but I know we're updating our Title 17. And I have the application. I'm like, well, this is what the application says. You know, and then I refer to the binder she gave us. It's like, okay, I have to call her every time to see what I'm actually going to charge for. Because we do have people who call ahead of time wanting to know what the fees are. But sometimes it's hard to give the fees because of the park fees are per square footage. How many square footage is it? I won't know. And they want concrete answers. How much are they going to charge me? How much is the engineer going to, I can't give you those concrete answers because, for example, a short plat, it's a deposit. And then after everything is done, we charge. And then after everything is done, we charge engineering fees and ten percent administrative fees and HBO fees. I can't, and they wanna know all the cost upfront. I can't give you all of that. All I can give you is what is on our fee schedule, which is a five hundred dollar deposit. And I explained to them, this is also included, but keep in mind that once this is all done, this will be charged to you. And they're like, well, that's not fair. That's all I can tell you, you know? But there's, we have gotten calls where they want a definitive amount prior to submitting the application. And I can't give that because of all the additional costs that are gonna come after the fact. But I try to give them as much information as I can. And that's where I call Millie Ann to confirm is SEPA included, is DNR included, is DNS included, is, you know, all this other stuff included in this application. I can give them a estimate prior to the application.
Thank you. Very well done. But that's exactly what she, what she's saying is that's the problem. That's an open-ended contract. And you don't know what the heck you're gonna do. Uh, just like what she's coming up, I'm sure she would rather come up to that person and say, you know what? This is it. You gotta pay this, 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 and this. It's on the, it's on the paperwork. You signed it. You pay the fee. We're done. Okay? But oh no, that's what she's saying. She's not sure because she's not sure because things haven't been passed yet. They're still working on it and so the process is still on the back burner and we don't know what it is. So how do we go forward? You know, that's, that's.
I think we have to explain it's a level of effort, whatever, whatever that level of effort turns out to be. It's not a one size fits all.
Yeah, well, it might not be one size fits all, but the thing of it is when you're talking to the public and you're, when you go to buy something, you just buy something and hope that they don't charge you anything more later? I mean, you can't, you don't do business like that. You wouldn't do business like that. None of you would do business like that. But yet we're doing it here and I don't get it, you know? If the, it should be as, like I said, that should be item specific as to what it is. This is what it is and this is what it costs and, and have it all there in front of you. So you know exactly what you're getting into. Cause you don't, you know, it might be that, uh, it might, I'm not saying it's gonna be thousands and thousands of dollars, but who knows? I mean, you know, it could be. And the, the thing of it is, that may not be in the person that's applying for all this. Might not have that kind of cash floating around because he just, he's kind of maybe, or she feels like maybe this is just gonna be this much and that'll be the end of it. But that's not the case. So I understand where Rebecca's coming from.
Yeah.
I understand, you know, what, what, what she's coming through, the lawyer's coming from. But we gotta come to something that, that's fair for everybody and put something together that's realistic and everybody can do and, and make it happen. So.
Maybe it's possible to come up with a range, expected range of, of costs. Is that doable?
Of course, you left it to me, you know?
I would say that when we get calls about questions pertaining to short plats or major subdivisions, preliminary plats, we can, we typically look at the site and if, you know, if it's got steep slopes on it or if they're doing, um, more than eight lots or nine lots, then we can tell them that SEPA is gonna be required and that costs this much according to the fee schedule. If there, um, if an environmental review is required, SEPA is required and you've got steep slopes on there, you might need a geotech report. I don't know what that costs, but you know, you can call a geotechnical engineer to find that out. We do try to help estimate or give, give people ideas of how to estimate what they're doing. But if you think about any kind of, um, I'm trying to think of an example, like when you get an electrical inspection, do they charge per socket? Do they chart, you know, does every, does every house pay the same amount or every structure pay the same amount when they get that kind of inspection? Or do you pay the same exact amount, um, building to building for your insurance? You know, so this is kind of the same thing, like the, the charge, the more time that it takes to review a complicated project, the more it costs is what it comes down to. So, so if it's very simple and straightforward, then the initial deposit should cover that, that review time for both the engineer and for us. Because we, you want us to do a good job with the review. You want us to, to, to look over it thoroughly and make sure that it's the right thing for your city. And that's what it comes down to. As far as the title seventeen amendments, um, are there any other questions about it? I'm hearing that you wanna talk about it later.
I'd like to push it back. I haven't had time to review it though.
Yeah. And I will say that the, um, the edits that Jeff was, um, referring to, we, uh, I have those, Nicole passed those along to me and we're gonna make those changes. And we can make those changes before we get this back to you again. Um.
So two weeks is like.
We have a comment on the floor.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Yeah, ma- madam mayor, Jeff Von Schmutter, if you have before.
Yes, you may.
I, I, I think just from an observing, from an observatory perspective, I think it's important that we think about just from a planning perspective, uh, you know, how long we plan to outsource these sorts of matters versus in-house, bring them in-house. I think at some point with the city growing and all of that, it's great. We've got some fantastic support externally, but we may need to look at bringing some planning in-house at some point. I think at some point that's gonna be a critical juncture. I'm not sure if we're quite there yet, but I think we're getting close. So my recommendation would be, you know, as we move towards ratifying some of these things, uh, with some of our contractors, that looks great. But I think from an overarching perspective, we also need to look at, you know, from a, how are we gonna solve planning moving forward and, and at what point from the city perspective, we plan to bring those functions internal?
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Um, our next council meeting is three weeks from now.
I'm sorry.
Our next council meeting is three weeks from now.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so if that's where Mr. Sandretto is wanting to bring it back, that gives them three weeks, but I guess they have additional changes to do now.
Um, well, I hate to do this, right, but I'm gonna be gone for the next eight days.
So do you want the second meeting of June?
I, I would prefer that. I think that would give all of us time to review it fully.
And give them time to do the.
Changes.
Changes.
Maybe they can get those back to us in a week or so.
The changes are really minor. It's changing a, a twenty to a five and striking a couple.
So it'd be June twenty-first.
Yeah, that, that'd probably be appropriate.
Okay.
Does anybody have any objections pushing it back that far?
Is there any time limits that we are working with?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
We, it just, it will have to go through two readings for the ordinance. So whatever you do next meeting, if that gets, if it gets read for the first ordinance, if it's the first reading of the ordinance, we would have to read it again in two weeks or read the title again in two weeks after that.
So it'd be June twenty-first and July fifth.
That's fine.
So we'll.
Craig, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? You're the background noise. Um, so are we, are, uh, the intent is to move this to June twenty-three for, uh, for first reading, is that right?
June twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yes.
Twenty-first, okay. So we would just do a motion to postpone to that date.
All right. Okay. So someone want to move?
Uh, does the motion have to be outside the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, um, public hearing is now closed. Oh.
I have one, one question. Has the city looked at hiring a city planner?
Not at the moment. We have not. But it's obviously going to be looked at.
It will be looked at, Mr. Deckard. That was, uh, my plan to bring up at our next budget cycle. So.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed and I'll entertain a motion to move the.
Motion to postpone the first reading to the June twenty-first meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sandretto.
Mokler.
Dunk aye.
Quadsworth aye.
Reed aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, moving on now to the closed record hearing permit decision on Ellen's short plat and variance request.
I will be presenting this one also. Um. Emily's gonna help me because I do have a PowerPoint for this one. I'm visual, so I like to provide, I just assume everybody else is too. I like to provide images. Especially with complicated situations. Um, so while I'm trying to find it in the staff report, I can say that this is a closed record hearing. So you will be making your decision based on the record.
Do we need to go through that quasi judicial script?
We did not, do they have one?
So I need to open.
Do you have that? Do you have a quasi judicial script?
Um, I have staff, um, summary staff report.
Essentially, we, we need to inquire whether, um, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Uh, we need to inquire whether any members of council, uh, believe their, you know, lackability to be impartial with respect to the hearing. Whether they've had any expert communication regarding. Regarding the.
Stop breathing.
Or just muted. If, if you had any expert communications regarding the subject matter of the hearing, um, uh, whether you have any financial interests with respect to the, um, uh, the proposal or any other reason why you believe that you would not be able to be impartial with, with respect to the hearing. As long as nobody has anything to bring council's attention. Any council members have anything, then we can move forward.
Hmm, Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
So I don't have any problems, I don't think, in participating at all. I would just highlight that because I was on the planning commission for the April twentieth meeting, um, city attorney Jeff had advised that I could either vote once on this during either planning commission or city council. And I abstained from voting during planning commissions, so I could participate in this session.
That's correct. And the, the concern that would have been if, um, council member Funk had stated, you know, for or, or against, you know, um, then she would not be able to be impartial today's hearing because she's already stated an opinion on the matter.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, we ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so this is the Ellen short plat and variance. So again, this is a closed record hearing of a, sorry, slide. Let's go my back. Closed record hearing of a preliminary short plat with a variance from street frontage requirements. Typically, um, in most cases, a short plat's not going to go to planning commission. It's not going to come to city council. It's administrative action, administrative review. However, in this case, um, the applicant is seeking a variance from a piece of the subdivision code. It's also a duplicate piece in the zoning code. So as a variance, it comes, it goes through the, uh, public hearing process. The planning commission held a public hearing on the variance per the code section that's there, the seventeen forty. And the planning commission accepted the staff report prepared for the proposed two lot short plat and variance request for relief from street frontage, adopted the suggested findings of fact in the report and forwarded the application to you, the city council, with a recommendation of approval with the ten listed conditions. So the project is located between Horn Road and Birch Street. It's just south of Legion Park and just north of Irene Avenue. It's outlined here in blue. It's an odd-shaped lot. Relatively large lot. Um, there's an existing commercial structure on the west side of the lot that's addressed as twelve oh four Horn Road. And then there is an existing duplex addressed as twelve oh five thirteenth street that faces Birch Street or thirteenth street, sorry, I'm looking at an old map. And that is, um, owned by Paul Ellen, who is the applicant for this project. Um, there were signed documents for the owner of the property. So the owner of the property is different than the applicant. It doesn't. Um, and we made sure all of that was signed off on. Just a little bit of background, the parcel, so the blue here, you forward the slide, please. The blue here is outlining Mr. Ellen's property and the subject property. So the subject property has a split land use designation of commercial in red there on the west side and residential on the east side. And then the zoning, uh, reflects that. It's commercial on the west side. And then it's R three high on the east side as well as the other parcel. And, um, we believe that it's split like this. When we looked back at, um, the history documented and recorded documents, history of the project, uh, the property lines were previously similar to what's being requested now. But through a series of BLAs, the property lines have been changed to what is right now, where you have these two parcels. So the proposal is to follow that line of the split between, if you advance, sorry, I keep forgetting that. The proposal is to follow that line of the split between the commercial and the residential and create two lots. Lot one would be approximately twenty-four hundred square feet, a little over, and lot two would be a little over seventeen thousand square feet. Now, if you look at lot two, it's smushed between proposed lot one and the lot that faces on thirteenth street. And there's no street frontage. And there is a piece of code that says you have to have at least forty-five linear feet of street frontage. So that's where the variance comes in. The variance is to, um, allow the lot to be created without street frontage access. If you advance, please. Access will be taken from thirteenth. There is an existing ten-foot wide access easement already going across the property that leads all the way back to the, um, goes west and leads back to proposed lot one already. Um, as well as some, uh, various sewer and irrigation easements running all over the place. But the proposal includes adding another ten-foot easement so that they abut, so that there's a twenty-five foot access to get from the east from thirteenth to get back to this lot. If you advance it, just real quick, this is not what you're reviewing or what you're approving or anything. Um, this is just for illustration. And shows a potential duplex on lot two. That is the, um, proposed plan for the property. And then that's a picture of the existing duplex. So you can see to the left, as you're looking at it, the left of the duplex, you'll just see like the edge of something, um, the fence. And then to the left of that is where that access easement would be. So if you advance. So the planning commission can establish yard requirements when you don't have street frontage was, which is what we use to determine your setbacks for your yards. And planning, planning commission forwarded, uh, approval of this, recommended approval of this using the green lines as the front property lines, the blue lines as an interior, um, side setback line, which should be a five-foot setback. The pink is the rear property line. There'd be a ten-foot setback off of that. And then the yellow would be a ten-foot setback as a side that's adjacent to a more intense, um, zoning district, which is the commercial. And the analysis of that decision was provided in your staff report. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, it did go to public hearing with the planning commission. And prior to that meeting, uh, the city received one public comment letter and that generally addressed parking at the existing duplex, pedestrian safety and traffic. And there were no comments at the public hearing itself. And if you advance one more time. And then there were ten connect, ten, there are ten recommended conditions that have to do with fire safety, irrigation, utilities, the setbacks that I mentioned, um, no parking, the access easements addressing, and then required recreation areas. And then if you advance one more time, thanks. And with that, I'll conclude the presentation and, um, when it's time, I'll take questions if there are any.
Does anyone, okay.
From the council, the public is not allowed to speak at a closed record hearing. Closed record hearing, they're basing their.
There is, there is the, the caveat there that anyone participated in the open record public hearing could present this. open record public hearing could present the same testimony consistent with what they presented at the open record hearing, but no one presented at the open record hearing. Right.
Okay.
So the only ones that have permission to speak and question is the county.
Right, it's a, it's a problem, it's a, what is it, the local project review act requires any permit proposal. Have one open record public hearing and, you know, one, one closed record hearing, if we violate that, then we violate the applicant's due process rights under that law.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any questions?
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
One question that I have is related to condition number four about a fire hydrant and if it's required. And I'd had this question in planning commission too, but we didn't have an answer, so lot number two is definitely back from the road. And condition number four says a fire hydrant is required at the distance to the hose on the ground from nearest fire hydrant is over 300 feet. And we talked about 120 feet and maybe that was okay, but that was like one piece, we didn't know where that fire hydrant was, and my question specifically is if a new fire hydrant is required, who pays for the fire hydrant? Because we know how important it is to have that access.
May I address that, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may.
It would be the developer. If a fire hydrant is required, the developer would need to provide it.
Thank you.
So if this variance is approved, has this gone past the fire district? Yeah, to see about distances or have we talked to them?
That condition came directly, may I respond? That condition came directly from the fire department, when we review short plots and preliminary plots, we send them to the city engineer, we send them to anybody that will look at them, we send them to the city engineer, to the fire department. No.
I never seen.
No. But I got you to laugh. The city, the city engineer, the fire department. I've sent them to maintenance before. Anybody that we think would have a stake in it. Yeah, all the utility departments, irrigation looks at them. So that came directly from them, that was comments from the fire department were incorporated as findings and then as conditions.
Anybody? Madam Mayor, I move to approve the Lillian.
Ellen. Ellen.
Short flat and variance adopting eight findings of fact and 10 conditions of approval as recommended by the planning commission.
Mokler second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mokler.
Reed aye.
Wadsworth aye.
Sandra aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you.
That's over, I just find it interesting that the American Legion, it looks like they originally had the deed to the property.
Yeah, Legion Heights, they created Legion Heights.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, that's interesting, I love that history.
The south end of that, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, and that is the end of the closed record hearing. Okay, and our final public hearing is on the moratorium for R2 and R3 residential building permit applications. So we'll call that meeting to order. Are there any questions on the R2 or R3 residential zoning? Dawn, Alan, and.
I have a emailed one too.
Oh, okay, alright.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we put it in in the public hearing notice that comments need to be received by Thursday of last week to be put in the packet for today. This one I received on Monday, so I'll be reading it into the record. It's from Kevin L. Howes, land developer for Century 21 Tri-Cities. It says, "Thank you, city council, for the opportunity to comment on the proposed moratorium presented tonight as resolution 202206. My name is Kevin Howe and I am the land developer manager for Century 21 Tri-Cities, 89 Gage Boulevard in Richland. I'm writing, I am writing on behalf of C, S&amp;C Planning and Development LLC, which owns the vacant track of land identified as parcel number 118973013687002 located at 400 Carroll Ave in Benton City. The proposed six month moratorium being considered tonight would prevent new plat applications from being submitted until end of 2022 at the earliest. Given the typical nine to 12 months to get a final plat approval approved, you are in effect delaying any new plats not currently vested into almost 2024. The moratorium with, with respects to building permits will delay new constructions in the R3, R2 and R3 zones just as we head into the busiest season of, for the industry. Once the moratorium eventually lifts, the builders will be able to proceed under the newly created guidelines. However, without buildable lots created through the plating process, there will be a break in the supply chain until the new plats can be recorded. New construction opportunities would be reduced to the existing collections of tracks, creating more sprawl, short term and less optimal use of city services. Moratoriums are considered an emergency measure and with respects to plat applications are typically used when council slash staff are overrun with said application. Based upon the frequency of plats being approved recently in Benton City, I'd be a bit surprised if this is the case. The staff at AHBL has done a commendable job of modernizing and adding to the existing municipal codes, and while I applaud the efforts of the city to take a step back to update regulations surrounding plat developments and new constructions through modifications to the city code, I fear the inclusion of new plat applications in the moratorium will have an adverse effect to the city's goal as stated in the comprehensive plan of providing affordable housing. Fewer available building lots leads to higher land prices, which ultimately gets passed on to the home buyer. While not stated specifically in resolution 202206, if the intent of the moratorium is to prevent investing of new plat applications under the current current municipal code requirements, would the city council consider allowing city staff to continue accepting new plat applications with the proviso that the final plat approval would not occur until provisions of municipal code title 17 are adopted? Would city council consider a waiver program to those plat applications which in the mind of the city staff meet the intent of the proposed municipal code title 17 changes? All new plats would need to be incorporated, would need to incorporate the terms of the revised municipal code title 17, which has already been offered offered up in a proposed form publicly through previous council meetings, I appreciate the opportunity you provided to consider these thoughts.
Thank you. The gentleman back here, could you please state your name?
Daryl Heimberger, 907th Street. Just here to say that I support the moratorium. Just this weekend, I had a lady approach me while I was in my yard, she wanted to take pictures of our horses and she said it was so that she could send the pictures to her granddaughter and prove that she lived in cowboy country, right? And that, that's, I think, the comprehensive plan says that we want to be unique and I think that's part of the uniqueness of what we are. And so I sort of disagreed respectfully with the gentleman that said that, you know, the comprehensive plan doesn't speak to it, because I think it really does. I think if you let developers do, and developers do, you end up sort of looking like West Richland and nobody's going to call that the country. So I, again, I support it. I would leave you with this also. You know, people go to Napa Valley, not for their residential two and residential three high occupancy housing, right? They go to be someplace where it's not like where they live, right? So, you know, do we want to be that place where people come to and stop or just drive by? So I support it, thanks.
Thank you. Dawn, you had something to say? Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, I've kind of, kind of looked at this before. And my my thinking is we, the people, in the last two years have been going through an awful lot. We've had COVID, we've had shutdowns, we've had masks, we've had this, we've had that, we've gone through all this stuff. And who knows in the next next week, next month, next year, I mean, we don't know where we're going to end up, because it's a mess. And so the thing with is, now we have property and like this gentleman that Rebecca just read, he's concerned, and I understand that concern, but I also understand that he's a developer. And if he can't find a place to build homes here, he'll look elsewhere. Because the, the demand is there. And if, and if we, the people that have these lots or can provide lots and make this happen, now's the time to make it happen. Not a year and a half from now and then try to slow everything down. My idea is, is that we need to forge on and keep going because who knows what's going to happen in our very near future. And that concerns me, so I think you see a lot of people right now that are, they're looking for homes, I get calls on my property and people look it up and say this and that. There's a lot of interest. And I think we've all had that, had properties that we've either bought or sold and we know what the deal is right now, it is a seller's market. And so the sellers got a chance to, to get these properties, if they have anything, now's the time to, to be doing it. What happens next year? Do you know elections, whatever may came up? That might change. And the money might get really tight, it's already going up. How much more is it going to go up before, before all the bottom falls out? If that's going to happen, I'm not trying to be gloom and doom, but we have a, we have a an era that's, that's quite, quite something, so I'm an ask that you put not do this, not have a moratorium, I think we don't need that right now, I think we need to forge ahead and make things available as we can and if, if the opportunity is there, so be it, let's make it happen. And don't put it off, because a lot can happen, once that's, once you decide to put that a moratorium in, trying to get it re-going again might not be a simple thing. Right now, you might, I think you can do that, but what's going to happen in a year from now? So, that's my point, so that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Was there anyone else from the audience, I believe Mr. Von Schmader said he wanted to speak on this point?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, you know, I, I believe it's okay for us to take a bit of a breath here in terms of what we want the city to become, and I'm not necessarily sure we want to have things on kind of hyperdrive from a development standpoint right now, I think there's a lot of things that we're building foundationally within the city, within our, our leadership and you know, some of our, our planning perspectives and envisioning that we're trying to put together, so I, I, I have to agree with the gentleman that just spoke earlier that, you know, I think we need to really be mindful of the implications of this, that, you know, we may not want to go necessarily full throttle until we get some of this done, I, I take a like to, you know, our islands of Hawaii, you know, I live, I live in Maui and they let, they let development rip in Honolulu and, you know, look what it is today versus the development in Maui and we kind of took a bit of a pause and and we, we, you know, there's, there's Prosser, there's West Richland, there's all these other areas that are being developed and lots and lots available, so it might not be a bad idea for us to just take a little bit of a breather and think about what we want to become before we just overdevelop our area without some, some real serious thought. I think, I think Benton City's got some really beautiful attributes and I think the preservation of that is, is really important, that we don't necessarily want our town to become overbuilt, so I just, I just think it's important for us to be reflective before just passing this without some serious some serious, you know, forward thinking. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment?
It's open for us as well, right?
Yes, you.
Okay, so because I've heard a lot of talk, various ways. I want to address the fact that, you know, for Benton City, our growth has been fairly large in the last six years. When I grew up here, there was hardly any growth. Ever. Along with that, we're starting to see problems. We're seeing traffic problems. We're seeing infrastructure problems that have brought, been brought up to my attention that I've passed on the spink. You know, we see drainage problems. We find sewer line problems. Going across properties, going across here, going across there. And the one thing that we're finally starting to do is say we need to figure out and make sure we're doing the right things. So I'm in support of this moratorium. I know others have expressed to me that they don't think that it's the right move. But we're talking 120 days to six months. And we're not going for a year. We're saying we need to stop everything and look at these particular codes and come up with some, some finite details so that we're getting the type of buildings that we want to have. So that we're not cookie cutter cities. We, we can go through a couple of our developments here. And I look down the street and it's the same houses. You can't tell them apart. Do we want that? Is that what Benton City is? It hasn't been my entire life. So that's my two cents on it, and that's where I'm going to go with it.
Okay, well, this will come up as an agenda item after, after this hearing, thank you for your opinion. Does anyone else want to express an opinion? Okay. Hearing no more requests, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll resume the regular council meeting, minute, meeting. And I think our next item is an executive session. And I would request that we have a five minute break before going into the executive session. And how long do we need in this executive session?
One thing I want to point out, it's already 9:30. And if we go for half an hour, we're going to come out having to make a motion to extend our meeting because we're going to be at the three hour mark. And we still have all action items to discuss and to discussion items that we have employees here waiting for. So it's up to you what you want to do, I just want to give you, give you a heads up of the time. And if it is going to take a half hour.
Five items.
Okay.
Well, so what we're going to do for this executive session is then have everybody step out, I'll put everybody in a break room. And we're not here for this.
Before we take our break, let's just motion right now.
We can figure, I don't, I don't know what all is, I don't know exactly what we're talking about in this executive session.
Let's, let's motion right now to extend the meeting, so we'll motion to go past the three hour mark.
Okay. All in favor, please say, signify by saying aye.
Sandra aye.
Mokler aye. Reed aye.
Wadsworth aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so we will come back in a half an hour.
No, we're going to take the five minute break, then come back and then go into executive session.
Okay, well.
There is action now.
Yes, there is. Meeting is called to order. Meeting is called to order and we'll need to extend again.
No, we extended the meeting.
We made a motion to extend the meeting past the three hours before we went into executive session.
Yeah, we didn't give it time.
All right. So the next item that we're going to talk about is, um, the approval of ordinance's resolutions. Uh, the first item is resolution twenty twenty-two oh six, a resolution of the city of Benton City, Washington, adopting a moratorium on the acceptance of building permit applications.
Make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero six, a resolution of the city of Benton City, Washington, adopting a moratorium on the acceptance of building permit applications and building placement applications for our two and our three medium and high-density residential zoning districts. Scheduling a public, it's already done.
That's done. Okay.
And establish immediate effect.
Like, the whole thing didn't fit.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, aye.
Buck, aye.
Walther, aye.
Rita. Once again, I think there's a better way to do this. Mokler, no.
Okay. Um, thank you. Motion carries. The, um, next item is the SCADA telemetry, telemetry for Wells one, three, four and booster station change order.
Motion to table to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Buck, aye.
Sandra, aye.
Mokler.
Walther, aye.
Rita.
Okay. Um, motion carries. The next item is reservoir two overflow recommendation of acceptance.
Madam Mayor, may I address Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Everything good?
Uh, yes. Yes. They have.
Are you telling me that the water tower floods were good?
Yeah, what, what we've had them do up there on the site is, uh, to the south where there's the house next to the reservoir. Everything is, is slope from the edge of the bank back towards the reservoir. So if, uh, there's, um, runoff, normal runoff, it will, it won't go over that slope towards the house. And then we've built the overflow pipe that goes from the reservoir into the sewer manhole. And so if the, the pump port is stay on for some reason, um, that overflow would just go into the sewer system. It, it would of course surcharge the, uh, the treatment plant. But, uh, with the, the SCADA information um, and Wade's ability to receive that information, uh, right away. Uh, I think we're in a lot better shape now. That's what the whole SCADA system that was put in.
Does it?
It doesn't say.
Okay. So let's, let's touch base on three or four things here. Um, one, you're saying the sewer plant's good on handling all the water.
Yep.
Thing came out. Two, um, how's that going to affect the sewers in the area if we do start filling up those manholes? And number three, does that include sales tax?
Yes, it includes sales tax. Um, the, uh, the sewer lines would be surcharged uh, for a while until we get the, the, uh, uh, pumps turned off. Cause that's what, that's the way that the reservoir is going to overflow is if the well pumps are stuck on. And so we just fill it up and overflow. Um, so yeah, the sewer lines would be surcharged. Um, I don't know. Um, I would, I would say the system should handle it. Um, could there be some areas where we have some issues? There's a possibility.
Okay. Um, from my standpoint, and I don't know about the rest of the council, I need you to make sure that we're not destroying people's houses.
Right.
Pump stay on. And with that, um, you can work on that whenever, but I'll make the motion to accept the completion of reservoir two overflow project and total amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents.
Rita, second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, aye.
Walther, aye.
Buck.
Rita.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Um, RCCF amended and, uh, restated disbursement agreement for Ninth Street project. Is that the one we are coming back with?
This is the one where we have to sign because of the increased amount that they're giving us. Right, Ellen?
Correct. Um, there is one, uh, item that I, I've asked, uh, Adam File, who's, uh, works with the county, um, that he look at and I hadn't heard it back. I haven't heard anything back from him. Uh, they just got it to me, I believe it was last Wednesday. And so I tried to get a response, but it's under, um, item one, that's on the second page. And uh, let me find it here. It's in the, the third line down. It says, uh, cost incurred by the city for Ninth Street project between the date of execution of this agreement and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I've asked for that, that date of execute, of execution of the agreement be changed to August of twenty twenty-one, because that's when we started talking to them that we needed those funds to start working on the project. And, uh, it wasn't until December that they basically remembered that. And then we didn't get the, uh, this contract in place until the first one, I believe it was March third. So that was, you know, about eight months after the fact that we said we needed to start, uh, having costs that could be reimbursed.
So you're saying I need to make an amendment on the, the motion to include a change of the date?
Yes, yes.
All right. Uh, I make a motion to authorize Mayor Linda Lehman to sign the amended and restated distribution agreement for the use of the rural county capital funds for the Ninth Street project with an adjustment of the date of execution.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Rita.
Sandra, aye.
Mokler, aye.
Walther, aye.
Buck, aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Lift station two, change order two.
Make this quick. Ellen?
Okay.
I'm with us.
This is a change order for the, the lift station two project and, uh, it's typically called like a cleanup changer or also because on there we had some items that, uh, that were not done as part of the project. So you'll see those as deductions. And overall, um, the increased cost is about, uh, um, twenty or eighteen thousand dollars. And those increased costs were due to the, um, the nature of the excavation and we wanted to use, uh, controlled density fill or CDF. It's basically, uh, cement and sand. It's not a full concrete, but it's something you pour in and, uh, it stabilizes the hole. There's no settlement. And that's what we use. So that, that was the, the big change in the cost of the project, but, um, so overall this change order shows, you know, reduction of, uh, twenty-three thousand dollars. And that, that's, uh, because of those items that we, we did not use on the project.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
So basically this is, we did change order number one for an increase of forty-one thousand, um, which was approved when, Ellen?
Um.
Four months ago.
Yeah, about four months.
Yeah, yeah.
And then this change order is coming back to decrease it twenty-three thousand. So the actual amount that will be taken out of the, um, the, I think it was a sewer fund?
Sewer fund, yes.
Yeah, is only eighteen thousand instead of forty-one thousand.
Hmm.
Just so you guys.
Madam Mayor.
Eight, forty-one plus eighteen.
I motion to approve change order number two as presented.
Is there a second?
Rita, second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, aye.
Walther, aye.
Mokler.
Rita.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Now down to the last few.
Two more to go.
Okay. Well, the first one is Benton City administrative code update.
And that is what I emailed you guys this morning. Um, I forgot to put the sheets in. Um, but I added them to the packet, um, this morning. Um, after further discussion with Jose and Wade and Sergio, the verbiage that was ultimately decided to be put in for taking the vehicle home was updating maintenance form into maintenance supervisor, uh, maintenance lead. We took out, um, code enforcement because she stated she didn't need to take her vehicle home. And then, right?
At this time.
At this time. Um, and then we put on-call for weekend staff as required by rotation part of our section five-five of our admin code.
Okay. I'm going to be the bad guy. How many people got to see this in print?
No. You saw?
Yeah.
You saw it? You saw it? So you three are good to vote on it? Where was it in print?
Do you want to email?
Copy?
Uh, I, I didn't get to see it and I, I'm not going to vote on it without reading through, so.
That, that, uh, it was table to be brought back. So that's what we're doing is we're bringing it back.
Are we not going to?
It's just a discussion item right now.
Just a discussion item?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a copy and take a look at it.
Sure. Um, and then one of the other things that we discussed the last time we were here was, um, the commuting. Um, they put more than, they used to say fifteen miles. They put it up to twenty miles. And then each employee taking a city-owned vehicle home shall be documented through tracking devices, which we have the GPSs on. And the purpose for, um, for on-call will be documented on efficiency logs and time cards. The time cards are to be submitted to me by monthly for verification. So that's the verbiage that we came up because last time we brought it to you guys, the verbiage wasn't correct. So we've updated.
And then we also did the cost analysis. For taking the trucks, the trucks that are mentioned here. And, uh, two people would be taking them home. We didn't count Wade's truck because he doesn't go out of town. He lives in town. So his mileage is like one point three miles. Um, so we just, his is already included in the big spreadsheet that, that was printed out for Bill. So, um, we use the other trucks, the, um, Sergio and Jose's trucks and got the mileage and, uh, then the all call, on-call person. And it totaled to one thousand and three miles per month was the monthly mileage, um, use. And, um, we looked at it a couple of ways. We, um, calculated it with the gasoline at today's prices. And that came out to be four hundred and eleven dollars, uh, a month for gas. Maintenance, um, is done by the maintenance staff. So there's minimal cost there. Our alternative is to, um,
reimburse them for their mileage.
To reimburse them at fifty-eight cents a mile. And that cost would be
six hundred and two dollars.
Six hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents. So we're saving about close to two hundred dollars a month, um, over, over a year's time. So that's twenty-four hundred dollars we're saving by allowing them to take the trucks.
Um, we also have Wade here who would like to.
And Wade, and, uh, I wanted Wade to say, say a few words on this. Since he's waited all night. Thank you, Wade.
It's so cheap.
Um, so really the biggest thing for me is response fine. Because if these guys have to drive right past a broken water line or pouring sewer manhole, every second is huge. You know, I've been here eleven years. I've seen a lot of broken water lines, a lot of sewer porn out of the ground. And I've heard stories of staff just having to drive right past somebody's house or drive past sewer coming out of the road because they don't have their pickup and it's, it's, uh, you know, kind of not just like, uh, a cost for us because of the damage that's being done, but at the same time, it's a big cost for the citizens too. Cause if somebody's got like a broken water line behind their shower or something, you know, every second's huge for them. And sorry, I'm a terrible public speaker. I work long hours. Benton, really, it's, it's such a small town. You got, you know, a few people that are kind of married to their job and we really rely on those few people to, to show up. It really helps when these couple of people just have a pickup. What, that's already got all their tools on it. And for me, I know like if I got two sewer pumps in a lift station that are out, um, I would much rather that they're going to show up in twenty minutes rather than forty minutes because it's a big pan, but.
So in an emergency, do you get called out as well?
With lift stations and wells and water towers and the wastewater plant, that's me. So with like water breaks, water leaks, you know, backup sewer, that's typically going to be the guys. Typically with the stuff that's doing damage is, uh, is going to be that.
Do they call you up when they need you?
For that kind of stuff, not often. You know, if, if they're having trouble finding something, maybe just because I've been here a long time. For the most part, they, they have that kind of stuff under control.
I'm trying to think how to word this and, and put it nicely. And I, I guess I'll just flat out say it. I want to ensure that, uh, city trucks won't be taken home for lunch for people that live out of the area.
We discussed that.
Because I know
they don't usually.
That was a past practice.
Well, they said that they bring their lunch now because it takes
Sure.
half their lunch hour, lunch break to get home.
I'm, I'm just voicing concerns. I'm trying not to point fingers. Uh, knowing it's a diesel and you're getting about twelve miles of the gallon or a little less with, especially with the big truck that slowed it down. And at four hundred dollars extra cost, it, it just doesn't seem quite right. It.
And the pickups aren't chill gas.
Are they all gas or not diesel?
No.
Okay. Perfect.
That's one of the
helps me a little bit.
That's one of the questions I had because when I was doing this cost benefit analysis that Bill requested, um, we have a bill from Conoco and we have a bill from Just Minute Mart. Um, and when I was calculating, I'm like, oh shoot, our gas bill is twenty-two thousand dollars a month. And when we sat down, they're like, oh, no, 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 Conoco's diesel for like the big trucks. Our trucks go to Just Minute Mart. So I'm like, okay, then that's thirteen hundred dollars a month. That's a difference. That's a huge difference.
We're still at four and a half dollars a gallon right now. I know that, uh, you need multiple people, um, on these jobs. I would, I still don't want to spend all the money on the fuel. If we sent one person home with the truck, whether that's the, the lead or the supervisor or the on-call person.
Well, the on-call switches every weekend.
Well, that's fine. I'm, I'm just saying that person, that one person, whoever it is, takes a truck home. I understand the need for it. The other people, whoever gets called in, just talk.
The other people, whoever gets called in, stop driving your vehicle.
Well, this, as Jose pointed out to me, he said his truck is for inspections and other things other than the water line and sewer breaks. So they need both functions um, at any time.
Whoever's taking the truck home is the one that's on call, in my opinion, and that's the truck they take home for the water breaks and
The things we don't do on call Monday through Friday.
It's the lead who handles it.
Well, then the lead would take that truck home that handles the water breaks, sewer breaks. But there's no truck assigned to one person. It would have to be a shared system.
But on a Friday, I, I can see where they're at. On a Friday, just let him take the truck home. He's bringing it back Monday. And you know, it's, it's one more day.
Okay, and that, and I mean, how are you going to, so are you gonna, are you gonna take him back home to?
Yeah, you had
Car, you
You would have to leave his car here all week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. I see where you're at with him.
And if, and if we put somebody on call all week, does that open the CBA to be paying them on-call wages now?
Well, that's why the, this foreman was supposed to be that guy. He wasn't getting any extra compensation that I'm aware of.
No, past practice is that they weren't, but with this situation, I'm gonna be frankly honest with you. They are wanting to go back to the CBA, get, start getting paid for it.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss that when it comes.
So.
There's obviously compensation and other things that they get too, so it's all negotiable.
Are we by chance can have any additional cost for any kind of tooling? You know, uh, whoever takes which truck home, are they all set up to accommodate any kind of water sewer, any kind of emergency or?
Or like the truck that the Wade would take home and they discussed whoever's on call taking that truck home is the one truck that has everything. As far as like a crane, a welder, air compressor, torch, that's the one that has most of the stuff. They all have, you know, some set of tools, but that's the one truck.
That's the tool truck. And in my understanding, there's two of them?
There is two of them. This is the one that actually has it.
Yeah, we do have two of them that are like that.
That's you.
Thank you.
I think the city staff did a really good job coming back and being thoughtful about the changes that they've requested. There's been a lot of rebuilding over the last year of the team. And our city's growing. We're seeing more of these issues pop up and we're working to expand our water and sewer lines. And through that, like the work on Ninth Street, then we find more problems that pop up too. And Wade, we really, I really appreciate you coming to talk to us. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thanks for all you do. Um, and I think your um your feedback means a lot because um, you, like Jose and the rest of the team, know better what the needs are of what you need to accomplish. And I think part of our job, while we need to be good stewards of taxpayers' money, is to help make sure we can um, be responsive to the citizens. The, the city is empowered to be responsive to the citizens too. And it seems like there's a process that's addressed on the second page of the documentation for the tracking and monitoring, which is improvement that many people have been asking to see for a while, that the staff feels that they can abide by this reasonable.
So does this just need to be brought back as an item for approval?
If you guys are ready to do the approval now, you guys can.
It's on for discussion.
Yeah, it's in discussion.
Three minutes left.
Okay.
So let, let's, let's go ahead and bring it back for an approval as it's amended. I'm okay with it. What's next? Uh, fire stuff.
No, it's the utility bill insert.
Why don't I have any of this in my packet?
Because it got moved. This is, this is the part that you didn't get in the email this morning. You didn't re-look at the packet. It's just the Yeah.
Utility bill. That's the last.
That's the last thing.
I move to give a task order to Kerr Ferguson to create a policy stating that the city will provide to nonprofits the ability to include a one-page flyer in the utility bill if it does not incur additional postage.
And if it's paid for by the nonprofit.
Yes, there you go. Sorry, I forgot about that one. Yes.
And there's an incidental public benefit.
Yes, you, you know what we're talking about. There you go.
I'm, I'm sorry. It's four hours in. My apologies.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have another three weeks for the guys to take their personal trucks.
They're gonna be submitting reimbursement is my understanding if that happens.
Don't have to be reimbursed for that.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with that?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I'm trying to finish this one.
So I got
All in favor of the motion, me and Jake, in the second?
Buck, aye.
Sandra, aye. Rita, aye.
Um, just one thing before we leave, under general comments, um, we have our utility moratorium ending in July. Um, I was wanting to ask if they can put it on the next meeting to see what we want to do with it.
I believe we gave it till July so that we could end it.
Okay, also um per proclamation from the governor, um, Zoom meetings are not, no longer mandatory or required after June first. However.
They're an ICD for the public, yes.
Okay, I wanna see if you guys wanted to continue that.
We, we probably need to look at codifying a policy on Zoom and how that will be handled. Um, but as far as tonight, I'm good. I motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Hold on. You're killing me, Alan.
I just want this to go another hour or so.
I've been here six.
Wanted to try to set up a workshop for kind of the public works projects.
Okay.
If we could do that.
We will, we will look into that for sure.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if you could direct your staff to send out a doodle pool.
A what?
A poll.
A doodle?
Yes, a doodle poll with some dates and times. However, I will not be available until after the twenty-fifth.
After Memorial Day. I won't be available until after Memorial Day.
The following week is a meeting.
Yeah, so we're, we're pushing, we're pushing it out, but that, that's the best I can do for you.
Yeah, right.
I, you know, I, I could try to find wifi, but I don't, where I'm gonna be, there'll be much.
Okay. Alright.
Okay.
Okay, so who first and who second in the adjournment?
I, first of it.
First and um
Yeah, it was.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Alan.
That roads, but I need to get rid of